Let's do it. So, welcome to Freeport Town Hall Council Chambers. We're here on Tuesday, December 6th for Town Council Meeting Number 22-22. So, we'll start by calling the role of our councilors. Tonight, we have Counselor Pillsbury.
President.
Counselor Fornier.
Here.
Counselor Lawrence.
Here.
Counselor Daniele.
Here.
Counselor Egan.
Here.
Vice Chair and the Chair Pilch is here. And Counselor Bradley is deterred by an airport that's under construction, so he may be joining us by audio if that works, but that remains to be seen. So, some suspense. In the meantime, let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, we have some minutes from our meeting, Number 21-22, from November 29th, which I assume everyone has read. And does anyone have any changes to make? If not, Counselor Pillsbury, would you make a motion to accept them as printed and waive the reading of them?
I make a motion to waive the reading of the minutes of meeting 21-22, held November 29th, 2022, and accept the minutes as printed.
Second.
Another discussion?
Thank you to Town Clerk Chris Wolf for getting those done in record time. Amazing. Great.
All in favor?
Aye.
And is everybody six to zero tonight?
Abstain. I wasn't here.
Okay. So, five to zero to one, with Counselor Pillsbury abstaining and Counselor Bradley absent. I have two announcements tonight. One is about dog licenses, which are now available for next year. All dog licenses expire December 31st of every year. Dogs six months or older are required to be licensed by law. You can register at Town Hall or online at doglicensing.com. Please bring proof of the rabies vaccination and spay or neutering. Please be aware that you must renew your dog license no later than January 31st, or a late fee of $25 per dog will be charged. And nominations are being accepted for the 2022 Citizen of the Year. So, each year, the Town Council presents a Citizen of the Year Award to honor those who have significantly contributed to the quality of the town. Nomination forms are available at the Town Office and on the Town's website at freeportmain.com. Deadline is January 5th. So, if you know someone who should be Citizen of the Year, let us know by January 5th, and we will take that under advisement. In the meantime, it's worth noting that we have in the room with us tonight a Maynor to be thankful for. There was a nice article in the Press Herald about maybe 10, eight or 10 Maynors to be thankful for all across the state, and one of them is our very own Bob Stevens, who was recognized in newspapers, so. We'll be hearing from Bob shortly, I think. Any other announcements? No? None? Okay. Information exchange? We've got a handful of things to exchange tonight. I know there's two folks that I'd like to invite up to speak. One of them is before-mentioned Bob Stevens. And then, I know Tony Whitney is also here to talk about Simon and Mike stuff. So, before we get to that, are there any information exchange items from the council?
Short week.
Yeah, that's true. If we were here a week ago, usually it's two weeks, yeah. We didn't have a show. We didn't want to talk about the show that went on last weekend.
It was awesome. Everyone that came out said it was a great show, so it really was a nice show for the Freeport community players. Actually, it's the Freeport Players now, so look for it for next year.
Yeah, the annual radio show, it was a lot of fun. So, two different groups have approached and asked to speak tonight, and there are things that I would share on their information exchange, so rather than have me do the talking, I'd rather have them come up and do the talking. So, again, I think there's two groups. One, it looks like it's Mr. Morfit who's going to come up and speak around a petition that they had collected some signatures for that they're presenting to us tonight. There was another article about this in the paper today.
Hello, my name is Mason Morfit, and I'm here representing Freeport Climate Action Now, otherwise known as Freeport Can. I'd like to begin by congratulating the council and town staff for winning a community resilience grant of $121,000 from the state to hire a sustainability coordinator in partnership with the town of Yarmouth. The additional person power will help Freeport pursue additional actions to combat the adverse effects of climate change, and we look forward to working with him or her. Freeport Can's proposal this evening is that the town allocate $150,000 from ARPA monies that are currently in the bank to fund a municipal rebate program for electrically-powered devices. The intent of the program is to reduce the heat bills of Freeport residents while reducing greenhouse gas emissions that are the cause of climate change. On Election Day, 700 Freeport residents signed petitions in favor of this proposal. This is perhaps not surprising when they learn that according to the state's Efficiency Main program, heat pumps can reduce annual fuel costs by 50% and reduce CO2 emissions by 55 to 60%. We believe it deserves serious consideration by the council. Council members have already received a three-page outline of our proposal, which we hope provides enough detail to start a conversation, but doesn't have too much detail to be absorbed on first reading. That outline is also on the Town website, so I'll just provide highlights this evening for those who are just joining or online. Our proposed program is based on existing state rebate program run by Efficiency Main and by supplemental municipal programs run by South Portland, Bangor, Auburn, and other smaller cities around the state. These programs provide rebates for an array of electrically-powered and energy-efficiency projects, ranging from electric vehicles to heat pumps to weatherization programs. Rebate amounts generally run from $1,200 for an air-source heat pump to $2,000 for a new electrical vehicle, and up to 20% of project cost for insulation up to $2,000. Higher rebates are available under some programs for low-income applicants. We're proposing a similar rebate schedule for Freeport, also with a cap on total rebates of $2,000. We're also proposing that applicants attain an Efficiency Main rebate before they receive a Freeport rebate, a prerequisite also required by South Portland, Bangor, and Auburn. This condition means that Freeport's money is doubled or more in advance, and that as a result, Freeport's program gets maximum bang for the buck. We've proposed an allocation of $150,000 in ARPA funds based on the Auburn program, which is the most mature in the state, having been initiated last September. That program has been so successful that the Auburn city government recently increased its funding from an initial $250,000 with an additional allocation of $200,000 for a total of $450,000. Freeport's population is approximately 35% of Auburn's, so we're reducing our request proportionately to 150,000. Income eligibility requirements vary from program to program, for none from some Efficiency Main rebates, and none in all Auburn programs. We're proposing an income eligibility ceiling for Freeport of 90% of area median income, which would be $80,280 in annual income for a household of two people to $108,630 for a household of five. We're proposing these income ceilings because we want to focus Freeport program on low-to-moderate income residents. People who are buying heat pumps now can obviously afford them. We want to make them affordable to the people who are least able to afford them and who will benefit most from a reduction in their heating bills. Administration of the model programs in other towns vary from the General Assistance Manager in Auburn to the Sustainability Coordinator in South Portland. Administrative time varies among existing programs, but is reported at less than 15 minutes per application in Auburn, which processes 95% of its applications online. We would suggest that a Zoom meeting be convened among existing program administrators, Efficiency Main staff, and Freeport staff to determine the least time-consuming process that meets Freeport's needs. Finally, we believe the Freeport program should be initiated as soon as possible. Weatherization contractors and heat pump installers are currently booking out months in advance. We need to give Freeport residents a chance to schedule installations before next winter hits them with another round of fossil fuel price increases and hits the state and the town of Freeport with more calls for heating assistance. Thank you very much. Because I don't hear very well, and because I've got a bad back that makes it painful to stand up for a long time, I'm going to call on my friend and colleague Bob Stevens to be available for questions and answers that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morfit. Do we have any questions for Climate Action Now group and their proposal?
Can we continue?
Yeah, why don't you come up, because I have a bunch, there may be questions or dialogue. Yeah.
One question. How did we, how'd you come up with the rebate figure and the total figure? I mean, I'm wondering what the calculation is to incentivize someone to do it, but not be, to not give away more money that could be used with a pool for others. I'm just wondering what the methodology was there.
I'm not sure we thought it through a whole lot, Matt. We looked at what other towns were doing. We looked at what the expenses of different items are, and for example, I mean, just an example of someone with, on low income, that wanted to put in a heat pump, they, by the time they are able to take advantage of the rate that, of the rebate from Efficiency Main, say they start out with, I don't know, $5,000, $5,000 or $6,000 for a heat pump, by the time that they get a $2,400 rebate from Efficiency Main, $1,200 from Freeport, it brings it down to $1,400, which moves it into a more acceptable level. And that's one item. It's somewhat similar with respect to the heat pumps that are used for water. They're not as expensive, and the rebates are still pretty good. So, again, it makes it likely that they will think, you know, I can get one of these, and I'm in a position that I otherwise wouldn't be able to do it. So, that's where we, that's where we ended up. That's subject to change. This is something that seems to be working elsewhere. I know everybody has a lot of things on their plate right now. We're trying to make it happen as fast as we can. So, that had a lot to do with what, the way we approached it. The other thing I found out, again, thinking about the administration of it and how to reach out most easily in Freeport, I've talked with Matthew Peters, the Executive Director of the Freeport Housing Trust, and he's really interested in this program, thinking that, like, right now, they're looking at one of their projects, deciding what should they do. They've got these boilers that need replacing. Should they spend $8,000 on new boilers, or should they go to heat pumps? And clearly, I believe his board will want to go to heat pumps. And there is a way that treating the units, the tenants can end up benefiting from this, which is somewhat unusual, because it's the, it's the project owner that ends up paying the utilities. But he, I talked it through with him, and he could see that from the reduction of cost of operations from having a heat pump, that they will be able to pass savings on to tenants by somewhat being able to look at reducing rent. So, we've got that group there, and that's not going to take a whole lot of effort to deal with them. Also, I've talked with, we've talked to FCS and the people that are in that heat, what's it called? The Heat Assistance Program. Turns out, 25, 26 own their own homes, and they are clearly qualified with Efficiency Main because of the level of their income. So, and he, Michael over there has said they would be happy to get word out to these people if the Town Council authorizes this proposal. So, we've got some people that are there, and they're ready to help. And so, I wanted to lay those facts out for you two. There are some other folks here, Mr. Chairman, that wouldn't this be the time for them to come up and talk about this?
Well, let's take some questions first. I didn't know that you'd bring a whole contingent with you. Otherwise, I'd put it under public comment, but we'll make sure that they get time to speak for sure. But let's see if there are questions from the council first, so that people, when they do come up and speak, can have answers. Counselor Daniele, it looks like you had a question before.
Yeah, I'm wondering if the goal is to help low-income families, if the initial cost of acquiring would be the problem rather than the rebate? So, you know, you're saying you could get it down to like $1,600, but initially, you got to come up with six grand, and that might not be so easy. So, would a potential, like, loan revolving fund of like, hey, you can come to us first, we can give you the money, and then you can pay it back to us after you've gotten your rebates and all of these things? Would that make more sense than just giving out cash? Because again, it might not incentivize somebody.
I agree.
To Counselor Pillsbury's point.
Yeah, that's a very good point, and I guess we hadn't thought through whether the town would be interested in taking that approach, but it does make sense. The other thing that we also could approach this is Efficiency Main issues a eligibility determination letter before the individual actually goes out and spends any money with a contractor, so that there, if the town would accept that as a evidence of qualification, that person could then talk to the contractor and say, "Look, I've got this lined up already." Still leaving that first nut, it might be $900 if the, instead of $1,400, if the heat pump is $4,500, or instead of $5,000. But it's still there, and that's still something that's going to be a hurdle for some people.
Just to add, that Efficiency Main has a low-income loan program, so that they could apply first for a short-term loan from Efficiency Main, taking on Auburn, like, initial.
Counselor Lawrence?
Have you thought about making this a nonprofit and making it, you could make it exclusive to Freeport, but then you could open it up to the rest of the state? Because I think that's really what we need, the whole state, not just Freeport. And if you had something, you could do things a lot differently if it was a nonprofit.
Great idea, Chip, but I don't think we've got really the energy for that. Wanted to get something going here in town. Our focus, by definition, is the town of Freeport. If we're successful here, it might lead to that.
One of my concerns is we're doing state money, state money, which is already taxpayer money, and then taxpayer money after taxpayer money, so.
Thank goodness this isn't a new appropriation here, right? The money is there. I hate to see it, well, there are a lot of good uses for this money, but I certainly don't want it to go to waste.
Counselor Egan?
You partially explained this, Buck, before, but in terms of getting the word out, did you pick up any tips or suggestions or strategies from the other communities about how they were able to just advertise the opportunity of the program to make sure that lower-income people do have an opportunity to get to it? I know South Portland is ahead of the state on a lot of different dynamics, and they have a really robust sustainability coordinator position there who can mobilize like that. But I'm just wondering if you've heard from some of the other communities how they, how they were able to get uptake on the program with their residents?
Mason, did you hear that question?
I did hear the question. It's interesting, South Portland really went to the mat, and they had.
Can you give Mason the microphone? Yeah, you can sit there. There's a micro, yeah, just grab that microphone on the side there. On the side.
Right, left side.
Oh, here we go.
Yeah, yeah.
Push a button?
Probably, yeah. And then, and that's where you can sit down and you can pass it around.
You hearing it? Anything coming out?
It's for the, it's for the TV.
It's for the TV.
I'm looking at the sign on the stand here that says, "Do not touch or move the microphone."
That, that.
Yeah, if you're going to stand up there, you're fine, but if you want to sit, you can hold off.
Yeah, so, South Portland really went to the mat, and they had, I don't know, house parties and you name it. Auburn, on the other hand, which has doubled its allotment, did almost nothing. They said it was largely word of mouth. There was something on the Town website. They tried to get the local newspaper interested. For some reason, they weren't. So, they've done it on word of mouth. I think probably some middle ground in there is.
Yeah, okay.
Is the better way to go.
And also, we have another option, too, which is, I use this as an opportunity to do what we said we wanted to do, which is present the petitions from the folks that signed on Election Day, and some of whom had signed somewhat earlier in a couple of gatherings. But, to the point of getting word out, our president, my wife Kathleen Sullivan, has gone through all of those and put together a list of names, but not just names. I know the town has the bulletin that goes out monthly, and I know a lot of people should be added to that bulletin. And we have a lot of names and email addresses to add to that, and that is one way to get it out. Also, FCAN itself, and I believe you'll find that your Sustainability Advisory Board is going to be.
Can you stand at the podium for me, please?
Sure.
Thanks. People on TV can't hear, so.
Sorry. I just presented the petitions to the Town Council, and they graciously received them, together with a list of names of folks who signed and email addresses that helpful, will be helpful in getting out word of this project if the town approves it.
Counselor Pillsbury and then Fornier.
I was just wondering, are any of the other towns, is there an eye to how this can be more sustainable, instead of just a one-time allocation of money? Are there any, are they thinking they'll do private fundraising? Are they thinking, to Jake's point, you know, maybe it's a sort of a loan fund that has some sort of forgiveness in it? I mean, that money's going to go quick, right? So, what's the best way for us to leverage the initial influx of cash to a more sustainable program?
I don't know whether Auburn reached, no, they didn't do anything. They used ARPA money for both of their shots of money into the program. But that's what ought to really happen. What really ought to happen is, if the council is in favor of this program, but knows that things need to be worked out, it's not perfect, what we're proposing, let's talk. I mean, let's ask the staff to work. I'm sure the Freeport Sustainability Advisory Board would be quite interested in working out maybe a short loan program to see if it could be made sustainable. Also, let's see how it's accepted. It may be a one-shot thing, that that's all that people are interested in. I doubt that, frankly. So, this is, so it's just, does this make generally good sense, and how soon can we get it going with whatever modifications need to be made to make it workable?
Counselor Fornier?
Well, yes, there is IRA money coming, and so that will be there as well. I have a couple of questions. Some people I know have put heat pumps in, and now they're struggling to make $350 to $400 a month in electrical bills. So, and was the home insulated properly? Was it not properly? And this gets back to our discussion. We had several meetings go, Bob, maybe, you know, and the importance of insulation and buttoning up homes, so are we putting the cart before the horse? That's really a good question, Daryl. And we, after you and I talked, I talked to someone who's in the business of actually doing audits, and she said basically what you said, is you got to make sure that the home is the right place to put this. And the state, I think she would have the state program start out a little bit differently than it does by not doing this, you know, air sealing test, but going down and looking in the basement. Should we first put down something and sealing the basement floor? Otherwise, you end up with a lot of humidity, injures the house. It isn't as effective as it should be. And that's why we included in this proposal actually providing a rebate to look at sort of a consulting, to see, make sure people have the right information before they jump.
No? Not yet, anyway?
This is one for Peter, I guess. Has the town ever done sort of a loan program? I mean, is that even, is that even feasible?
Tried that a couple of years ago. Even more specific than those type of loans that a couple of people just mentioned, we have done grant programs for energy efficiency and sealing before. They were much, well, maybe not that much smaller, you know, $1,000. I should probably do the research and figure out what the amounts actually worked out to be, but I know that maybe six to eight years ago, our former town planner and our former general assistance administrator, Joanna Hanselman and Donna Larson, worked to set up a program where we got some CDBG, we got a CDBG grant from the county, and that was used to do energy efficiency sealing and make really weatherization improvements on a small scale. I mean, these were houses that had, you know, single-layer walls, you know, roofing problems, like where water was coming through, things like that. But they were able to do some mild repairs in insulation and things like that, but smaller scale than what we're talking about, about individual appliances, and they weren't loans, they were kind of grants. So, but it worked. I know that there were a lot of people that participated in that program. I don't have those stats off the top of my head, but I'm sure we've got a record of them in the Finance Department. If you want me to pull them, we could, before we do this, we could see what those were. But I want to say there were dozens of 40, 50 participants that did that program, so it was pretty successful.
Some, some things that are swimming around in my head, just to kind of get them out there before we invite everyone up to chat. We've got a lot of requests for what to do with our ARPA money. Some of them are still pending. We should have some answers this weekend, some housing stuff. But I know that, you know, we've kind of directed people to go out and research a lot of other valuable causes. So, I like this. I'm supportive of this. I want to get it done. I don't know if ARPA is the right funding mechanism, or if there are others, if the Inflation Reduction Act is going to give us funds, if we can leverage the lie-heat funds to say, "Look, it's one thing to help people pay for heating oil, but wouldn't it be better to get them off heating oil and do something different?" So, maybe there's some, some work we can do, and I know Representative Sacks just finished up some work with a, I'm not going to mess it up, I think it's an energy policy certificate, or some research that she did, and met some people from all across the country that have been focused on these kinds of things. So, it sounds like this is, has had a lot of thought put into it, but there's still a handful of questions, so, you know, I'd say let's take some time and be thoughtful about it. I think we should do something. I absolutely agree. I think we need to, and, you know, if we can be the tip of the iceberg and encourage others to follow or do something at the state level, I'd much prefer to have a bigger impact than just help Freeport.
With respect to other, other possible uses of the money, I spoke with the head of, or the head of the Sewer District the other day, and learned that they put in an USDA application, as Daryl, you probably know, I think you've been involved in that somewhat perhaps, for a $5 million grant aimed at the $20 million, $17 to $20 million project, and $50,000, $100,000, $200,000 from ARPA is a drop in the bucket. They've got sources of money that they need to pursue, and it looks like they are pursuing. And I believe they've just voted to increase the, the usage fee so they can start building a capital improvements account, too. So, I think that's come a lot from the prodding and interest of members of the Town Council. With respect to the IRA, I've thought about that. Money's going to be there. I think the demand's going to be huge all of a sudden. Right now, there's a backup line for people to get installations of heat pumps. That's only going to grow and get longer, and I'd like to get some of our people in Freeport in that line as fast. And I'd like to get some of our people in Freeport in that line as fast as we can so that we can replace the heating assistance that you mentioned, Dan, with the savings. So that that Band-Aid approach isn't as necessary as it is now.
So, yeah, thank you, both. And I know there's been more than two of you working on it. So, thank you for the work you put into this so far. And thanks for kind of prodding us to do something with it. And thanks for our hefty stack. You know, those on TV, three inches or so, 721 names who signed a petition. I know you guys were hard at work on election day. So, just show, how many people want to come up and say a few words about this? Okay. So, normally, we do it under public comment, but unless there's objection up here, I'd invite you to come up, since we're on the topic, and spend up to three minutes telling us who you are and what you want to say.
Hi, I'm Kathleen Sullivan. And I'm the coordinator of Freeport Can. Not the president.
All right.
Oh, thank you. Thank you. We haven't established that. Maybe I should, I am the president. I just wanted to, I collected a lot of those signatures. Sitting at the table at the farmer's market, sitting at a table at the Electrify Freeport event, and sitting with these two men all day long, although I went home and had dinner. They were there almost the entire day at the polls. But I wanted to tell you just a little bit about two reactions that I had about the, two impressions that I had about people's reactions as they came to the table and as they presented the petition to them that were most impressive to me. And the first one is how much people thought about their neighbors. That there was really a sense that this was a way to care about their neighbors. Oh, sure, maybe I can afford it, but it would be great to be able to help out other people in the community. So, I thought that this was an opportunity for people to feel like they were really going to help out, you know, and to recognize the need to be, to come together to assist each other in the community. That was the, that was really strong throughout the whole thing. And the second impression that I had was the enormous respect people have for heat pumps. I expected, as Darrell, as you said, to get a lot of like, oh, those heat pumps, they just don't work in these old houses. But by and large, I feel like there's been a kind of a huge mental shift in the acceptance of heat pumps. Most, 99% of the people said, you know, I got a heat pump and it really works. It just saves me all kinds of money and heats my house, and I love my heat pump. So, that was a strong reaction we got from a lot of people, and I was surprised at that. So, I thought I should pass that along. So, next.
Hi, I hope to be brief. My name is Chalmers Hardenberg. I live at 11 Somerset. First of all, I'm not up here as part of Freeport Can. I'm just up here supporting this motion or proposal. And I want to, I think, correct something that Bob said. This is not just about next year's winter, but these heat exchanges, first of all, run through the summer. And everybody I've talked to said, I want to be cooler in the summer. And as we all know, that a lot of more people are going to want to be cooler in the summer than they are now. Also, as I understand the proposal, it's not just heat pumps. It's landscaping equipment. And I happened to talk to a Beans crew, and they said Beans is buying or has bought already two electric riding lawn mowers in addition to the electric grinder they were using. So, this money is going to help not just heating, but also the entire fossil fuel emissions if we can get low and moderate income people to buy into electric equipment as opposed to gasoline-powered equipment. Which comes to my last and favorite point, leaf blowers. I can't stand all the But this will indeed help those who want to have more quiet leaf blowers and help people buy them. Thank you.
Sad that your last point may be your most persuasive with a lot of people.
Hi, thanks for having us all here tonight. I'm Megan Shorm with the, I'm up on Winterview Road here in town and also serve on the Freeport Sustainability Advisory Board. And, yeah, just came this evening, the representatives from Afghan came and spoke with us at a recent meeting, shared this concept with us. And the committee spoke about it and does stand in support of efforts the town can make to reduce carbon and greenhouse gas emissions and save money for our residents. So, I think, really appreciate the approach that this is taking, focusing on some of the primary sources of greenhouse gas emissions in Freeport. And really, the focus on low income, low and moderate income households. So, I think, conceptually, very, very strong support for this. I think some good questions have come up about what's the best way for this to work. And we know that there's some good experience from a few other communities that we can continue to learn from and work with and encourage support for this. And also, to some of the questions, and I hope this is all right to say, it's slightly off-topic, but very related to the questions you all raised that, just to say, with the Sustainability Advisory Board and the upcoming climate action planning, I think some of the ideas that you all have come up with and thrown out create a lot of room for us to partner and work together with Afghan and other community members to really both save residents money and reduce greenhouse gas emissions. Thank you.
Thanks. Yeah, thank you. I did get word, come on up while you're doing that, I got word that Counsel Bradley's also trying to chime in on the conversation. So, give him a first chance to try and chime in, because it might be a little complicated. So, if you do, if you press star six on your phone, Ed, that should get you in the conversation. We'll see if that works. And if not, we'll take some more public comment and come back to you for another try.
He's here, but it says he has to unmute from his end.
All right. So, why don't we do a little public comment? Ned, if you want to work on star six and see if that helps you out, we can come back to you. We'll see you.
Okay, I'll go ahead. My name is Mark Miller. Live out in Surry Lane. I moved with my family to Freeport from Palo Alto, California, a year ago. And I'd just like to comment first, that was the most cogent plan I've ever seen presented. In Palo Alto, I never saw something that was this distinct and well summarized and answers, addressing everything. Second, I don't mean to be overly complimentary, but I never see the board there and be, ask such good productive questions as I just saw. Wasn't fighting back and forth. It was all productive and going forward. So, I'd like to address some things in terms of more of the context of, while California is brilliant in terms of electric cars and energy conservation and Maine isn't yet, and like to suggest that maybe Freeport could be a leader in making that happen here. And I think this is an excellent reference point for that, that the first thing you want to do is expand the number of people who enjoy the superiority of electric appliances. And this is expanding that group, making a larger group. Really talking about two steps. One, expand the group. This can expand the group. And the second, once it's expanded, you have it, guess what? We all know it. It's superior. You become a fan, if not a fanatic, about it. And that's what we want to flip. And I guess the last thing I would add is the comment was made about, could we then extend it to a brother or sibling community in Maine? Can we expand it? And I'd like to see, personally, see it established here and then reflect that or expand that into other communities in Maine and start doing the rational thing for the state as a whole and bring it forward.
Thanks, Mark. Feel free to pass on our contact info if there's anybody in Palo Alto that wants some tips about how to get stuff done. Counsel Bradley, another shot at you if you want to try and chime in. And if not, then
He's got, he's got the unmute on our end, so he can chime in anytime he wants. Just be, come and blast out of the speakers over here unexpectedly.
Okay. We'll see what happens. So, open to ideas, you know? If we want to, we can take this up at another council meeting. We can ask for some research in the meantime. I know I've got questions. I'll probably sit down with Bob and Mason. And like I said, I'd be curious to talk to Melanie and see if she has any suggestions.
Hello.
And who we got in. So, that's where I'm leading, is have another discussion, bring it back, see if we can take some action on it, one way or another. Counsel Bradley, it looks like you're with us now.
I thank you. I've been trying to read all the messages I've been getting. I know you've reached some conclusion, but I'd just like to weigh in. I think this is a great idea. And it's one of the few concrete things that we can do, Freeport Can. And I applaud them for coming up with it. I know there are a lot of questions. I've heard them. They're all good ones. This seems to me to be the kind of thing we do on downtown visioning. And this is directly connected to downtown visioning. If I've just spent my day reading it again, is let's do a pop-up. Let's take not a lot of money, but enough to get some experience with this, to understand what the problems are, identifying the right people, the right projects, and working to a bigger goal. But let's not stop. Let's use this as a way to show the people in town that we are committed to climate change and that we are committed to the kinds of ideas Freeport Can is proposing. As opposed to put it on the back burner for more work. In my experience with us, all of us, and this is not a criticism, it's just the reality, the minute we do that, it falls, it falls to earth or it falls to the bottom of the sea, and it takes an extraordinary effort to bring it back into focus. So, just take a little money. Use it for, and I don't know what the right amount is, maybe $5,000, $10,000 instead of $100,000. And let's get this thing launched and find out whether, one, as we think it's a great idea and people go to it quickly, the money is exhausted, and then get some experience with some of the people who have some good ideas about how to use it. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Counsel Bradley. Any objection to that kind of path forward, getting some more information?
No objection, just a question.
A question, okay.
How much money did we appropriate for the sustainability coordinator before we just got this grant? Don't need an answer right now, but just interested in that figure.
I think we're both trying to say 50.
Or is it 40 or 50?
And the sooner we get that person on board, this would be a great project to dig into. But I don't want to hold the project for the person, because I don't know how long it's going to take to hire the person, but it'd be a great project for that person to dig into. Counsel, again?
I just want to follow up. First of all, thank Freeport Can for putting the energy into this and spotlight with the visual and everything. Thank you very much for that. That's effective. If we can find a vendor that isn't working eight days a week installing heat pumps, it would be great. I love the idea of using the pop-up example from our downtown plan and actually have, like, you know, I was rolled over with the attendance we had at the Electrify Freeport event back in September. Maybe we follow that up with having a heat pump demonstration and have a vendor come and stand there and answer all the questions and have people ask all the stuff that are feeding information to other folks here about, you know, it's an expensive operation. And the math says you should be saving a lot of money by using a heat pump. So, there's something else going on if somebody's experiencing a dramatic increase in their electric bill. It does go up a little bit, but not by dramatic amount. So, there must be something else going on. We can break those myths and break those stereotypes and actually see if we can have a Saturday event where we have a heat pump contractor come and take all the questions and provide all the scientific answers behind it and get people informed. And then use that as a vehicle, maybe, to get, when we're ready to launch the rebate program, when we're ready to launch the rebate program. We have that coincide with that event.
Counsel Pillsbury?
Well, one thing, Jake, were you implying to use the money that we would have allocated to that position now that we've got the grant to support a pop-up?
I was wondering if that would be a good starting spot, because it's money that we don't need to get out in a certain amount of time. It could be an example of, you know, hey, this is proof of concept. We had $50,000. Like, that's, you know, you guys mentioned that Auburn, you know, a third of that is 150, but if we're doing income limited and Auburn didn't, I wouldn't expect to have as much demand for it. You know, so maybe 50,000 is actually like an easy starting spot, because I know that there are other demands on the ARPA dollars. And this is money we set aside for sustainability anyway. I mean, I definitely think that this is a good idea. I'm not sure if ARPA is the perfect fit, but we happen to have these other dollars kind of ready to just, to go.
Yeah, good point.
Yep.
So, my second point on that was, I'm supportive of a pop-up concept to see how we can do it. But I'd be interested in using some of the funds to support Freeport Housing Trust in making a conversion on a test basis, which is my thought.
I like that thought, too.
I do know, Counselor Daniele, that the Sustainability Advisory Board had asked us, I don't have any examples or hard numbers or know anything for fact, but when we did the grant application for the joint sustainability position, they had intended to put in a grant for some of the projects from that same fund, the GoPiff Fund, I think that that's what it was, at the state level. And their question to me at the time was if we don't compete for that money and use that and endorse the use of that for the sustainability position, is there any chance that some, I don't think they had any intention of taking all of that money, but would some of that money be available? That 50,000 that was budgeted for projects that we would otherwise apply for grant funding for? There was no commitment, but I did say you'd have to come and talk to the council. But there may be a plan out there. Are there, were there things discussed at the time? I don't need you to speak for the committee, but if, I mean, you can if you'd like. But I don't mean to put you on the spot, sorry.
The benefit of being new to the committee is I don't have a full, I don't have a complete answer for you.
I think there was some discussion about
That was discussed, absolutely. And I was just trying to remember in my, from one of my first meetings, what was discussed in that. So, I don't have a direct answer, but I do know
And I haven't seen any hard proposals or requests, because it would come to me to go to the council.
I think that's right. Waiting for this grant to come through that was just announced last week, so.
I just don't want to step on them if they had any expectation that they might be considered for stuff.
Yeah, I think that would be something.
They could bring proposals to you guys. But ultimately, it's not my decision anyway, so.
I think that's probably something that the advisory board would want to speak to at its next meeting, which is scheduled next week. Thank you.
Thanks.
With respect to that point, I had attended some of those board meetings and had discussions with the planning staff and all. And I think that there are going to be other uses for that money. And that's one reason why we focus on this ARPA money. That's a pot that's there. We can use it. We don't actually need to educate anybody on this at this stage. It, they know it. They, it's working, and we need to put it into effect. Holding more, with all due respect, Counsel Regan, I think that people are behind this now, as evidenced by the number of people that are petitioning you. The time is now. It's not, it's not going to get any easier to do these things in the future. And it's going to take a little work right away to figure out the specifics of this. So, that's what I would love to see the council trying to get behind and see if it works. And throwing $5,000, it doesn't really accomplish anything. We got to know that the money's there to use if it works and if you're satisfied with the way it comes together.
Thank you. Maine is indeed thankful for Mr. Stevens and all the work you're doing. So, thank you for that. And thank you for everybody else who came out tonight to put the proposal together, to get the signatures and to come out and advocate for it. So, we won't drop it. Don't let us drop it. We'll talk about it. We'll finesse it. We'll bring it back. We'll figure out what to do.
Great.
Thank you. Still an information exchange, the other thing that I would kind of use my time to talk about and invite somebody to help me do that is the mountain bike trails, which I know has been progressing along, and we've been meeting here and there. And we've got our former counsel, Whitney.
Ah, hi, guys. So, yes, this project is about, I'm speaking to you tonight to tell you that we are still full steam ahead to help develop the hedgehog mountain into mountain biking trails. This is something that we started when I was sitting at this dais. And I thought it was going to be fast, for some reason. How silly of me. But anyway, I felt it was ever so important, so I did feel like I should go ahead and continue to push that forward through my position as executive director of the chamber. And the reason for that is, I'm not a mountain biker, but I do know that that's a great population and great demographic of people that are not currently in Freeport. And with the popularity of mountain biking, it's during a time period where also we could really use the extra population of people coming to town. And then it also just ties in with our vision, you know, to get outside, be, you know, be more about experiences in Freeport. So, really, it checks all boxes. I also am fully intending, ever since the beginning, to not be asking for town money for this project, but to have it, we're going to do, go ahead and do it self-funding. And so, that's part of why I'm here with you tonight. I have had some substantial donors come forward, and they would actually like permission to donate to this project, but they need to do that by the end permission to donate to this project, but they need to do that by the end of the year for tax purposes. So we've come up with a way of fundraising, which would be that for $50,000, you can name a trail. I have three, I already have three people willing to do that. So I would like your permission tonight, just maybe by a head nod, to get that permission, to say to them that that is an actual way of fundraising that the town would approve. I've spoken with Peter Joseph about this at a little more length and also to Councilor Chair Pilch about this idea, and Peter or a combination of whoever would have the ability to approve the name that's chosen. Not Peter, okay? Peter's not going to do anything.
Somebody, though, would need to make sure it was a non-offensive name, I think.
Yes, of course. I work hand-in-hand with NIMBA, New England Mountain Biking Association, and they have designed signs with a great sign maker, so the signs will be beautiful and very appropriate for Freeport. But again, just wanted to get your permission, answer any questions about the fundraising strategy that we have. Councilor Egan?
Councilor Egan?
How have you fixed the contribution to a proper location by tax year end? Is it going to go right to NIMBA for?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. So they were able to do that?
Yes.
Okay, that's good. Excellent idea.
Thank you. Good.
Why am I not surprised that you're already three steps ahead of us with fundraising? Way to go.
So I mean, if all goes well, this project actually would be able to begin this spring. So and it would be great to get that momentum going right away so we can, you know, it isn't necessarily a formal part of the downtown revision, but I do think, you know, it obviously ties into the flavors of the vision, so it'd be good to see things start to come to life, as I know you're discussing later on tonight.
Do we have a word on when the vegetation plan and the conservation?
Just got an email this afternoon because Tony and I were talking about that this morning.
Perfect timing.
Just got an email from them that they, I think, are reviewing a draft at their next meeting, which I believe is a week from today. It's the Hedgehog Mountain Management Plan, which they're meant to update every 10 years, I think it is, or five years? Five years. They're a little bit behind, but they do have a draft. They have been working on it and they expect to review that, maybe approve it next week. And like we were talking about earlier, it's probably a good idea to give them a heads up, too, about the naming plan since they manage property.
Next Wednesday is there?
I think it's next Tuesday.
And Dan, will that come from you? Will you let them know that this is the idea for naming?
Yeah, I'm happy to let them know, and my guess is if they have questions, they know how to find you.
Yes, very good.
It is next Tuesday, the 13th, if anyone's interested. They usually meet at the community center. Any questions?
Have we ever named anything else in town for money?
Yes, we have. Stan Davis Fire Museum. That was done before your time, Peter. I know I'm an old guy here, but that's...
But for money? Do we take money for that?
We took a substantial donation and had the building rebuilt, and the agreement was it would be in his name.
So there have been examples, at least one. Example.
Well, I think it's a great idea. No town, no tax money goes into it.
That's the goal.
Awesome.
That's a goal.
Even though it does benefit everybody.
Love the idea, and you're still talking about a fund to continually to maintain that after spill.
Yeah, and those details, a lot of those details that we haven't been able to formally answer yet, we have been discussing, but it just, really, the first goal was to get sort of permission to design the trails, but all the other parking and maintaining, all of that stuff is obviously part of the discussion as well.
Thank you.
Is there enough nodding heads up here to get to anything ahead? Yeah.
Very good. Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Nice to see you again, as always. I don't have any more information to exchange. You'll be hearing from me plenty more later, so.
That was quite a bit, my hands.
Now, I'll put Peter on the spot for the town manager's report, and then after that, we do have some more public comment.
I don't have any information to exchange either because you guys have information exchanged it all for me. I'm happy to announce, which isn't really an announcement at all, that we were awarded a $120,000 grant for the shared sustainability coordinator's position. Interestingly enough, we found out about it, I think, last Monday or Tuesday. It was hush-hush until the state announced it, and I think we saw, and I think it was an email that went out, possibly Bob or Mason, someone sent an email out announcing it well before that anybody was supposed to know about it. So I was happy that the information was out there. So I didn't spill the beans. It was somebody that wasn't confidential to the decision who did. So how that's going to work, just a little bit of detail that we didn't get into, but we're working on a MOU, which is just going to be brief. It's going to be 100% Freeport position and 100% Freeport grant. Yarmouth isn't interested. Obviously, half the time it's going to go to Yarmouth, but they're not interested in housing or handling the money or anything like that. The grant application goes through Freeport, but half of it has to be spent on Yarmouth time. So we're going to have a really brief MOU with them, just their expectation of what the 50% looks like, and then the personnel control of the individual will rest with us here. So I think that makes it simpler. We have less to worry about, but we have to make sure they're comfortable with the input they have into the 50% of the time that's going to be dedicated to Yarmouth. So that should be pretty simple. We've done those before between the manager and Yarmouth and I and the two towns. They're already talking about who the interview committee will be, and they've already got a job description draft and a job posting draft that they had worked on months ago when we submitted the initial application. So those are getting tuned up based on the feedback we got from the state in the grant award, and they'll be going out shortly. So everybody's ready to go on that as soon as those details are worked out. Secondly, we are at the, still in the selection process for the social worker position at the police department. We had some good interviews, had some well-qualified candidates, and we do have qualified finalists. We don't have a selection of an individual, but there are multiple people that are qualified that we would hire for the job. So I just wanted to let you guys know that's not a strikeout. We still have to do backgrounds and negotiate with people and things like that, but we're not there yet. But definitely not a strikeout. There were very good candidates for the position. Not a ton, but some well-qualified people, which we're excited about. And I think we'll be talking more about that in the next couple of weeks. I know we've got our police chief in the background there who's here to talk about something else, but he'll be excited to get that position going. And that's all I've got for you right now, Mr. Chair. We've got a lot to deal with tonight, so we might as well keep cranking.
Questions for the manager? Nope. All right, on to public comment, which seems a little redundant tonight, but we have a portion of our agenda reserved for comments from the public on items that are not otherwise on our agenda. So if you want to talk about something that's not a police cruiser, downtown vision, transportation plan, anything else that's not on our agenda, come up to the podium. We know how that works. So if there's anybody here or anybody on Zoom who wants to raise your virtual hand, this is the time. Mr. Stevens?
I do like this podium. I want to talk to you about the stretch code. This is something that the state is still looking at, looking at, and it takes time. Let's jump ahead, if only by three to four months. Let's deal with it this year. It's not a big step this year. It's going to help, again, the future by having more efficient buildings. It's going to save money, and it's going to, to overuse a phrase, "help the planet." So I'd like to take the console up on what I hope is a desire to move ahead and decide whether or not to adopt it. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Stretch building codes.
Yeah, which really aren't stretched at all. It's just the next version of the building code, 2024. So it's not really, really reaching all that far.
Is there anybody on Zoom who's interested in talking? Anybody else in the room tonight? All right, so we'll move on.
Several people on Zoom, but none with heads up.
Okay. All right, so I think we can move on from public comment. So now we're on to the action part of our agenda. The first item is traditionally our consent agenda, which tonight I think just has two items on it, one for some donations to the library and the other to accept a resignation of Mr. Berger from the Freeport Sustainability Committee. Any reason we need to consider these separately rather than as one combined consent agenda? Hearing none, I would make a motion that the December 6, 2022 consent agenda be adopted.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
That's all six of us, so thank you for that. And then on to item 213-22, which is a special amusement permit for Mass Landing Brewing Company. We've got a public hearing tonight for the special amusement application. So Counselor Fornier, would you open the public hearing?
Certainly. Motion to open public hearing. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Is there anybody who wants to talk to us about the Mass Landing Brewing Company's special amusement permit, either here or online?
Nobody on Zoom, Mr. Chair.
Motion to close public hearing. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so Counselor Fornier, why don't you go ahead and read the order?
Sure. Be it ordered that a special amusement permit for Mass Landing Brewery Company be approved.
Second?
Thank you, Counselor Lawrence. Any discussion? We had some discussion last meeting about it. Any other discussion about it tonight? Pretty straight forward. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Six to zero. Mass Landing has their special amusement permit. Thank you. Next up, we've got item 214-22 about a supplemental appropriation for police cruisers, which I'm not sure if the chief or the manager's going to tee up.
I can introduce it very quickly. We talked about the specifics some at the last meeting. This was essentially for the purchase of two cruisers. They came back about $11,000 each, more on bid, 11,000 to 12,000, each more on bid than we were expecting. We initially only were able to secure one, not both cruisers, because of backlogs. The second one wouldn't come in until after the order period next year. So initially, we saw it as a problem, but we didn't see it as a financial problem. It was more of a procurement problem. So we were just going to buy the one, however, second, almost identical to the low bid bid, the second lowest bidder essentially said that they had one that was available, that they could make available to us because somebody else turned it down. So then we were, in fact, we would have been short for both of the purchases by $20,000. It's actually a little more than that, but there's a little bit of wiggle room in there for the fit up and the new equipment changeover. I know we were asked that question at the last meeting. So the question is really, if we appropriate the extra $20,000, we can purchase both cruisers this year or at least get on the list and maybe we'll get them this year, hopefully, not next fiscal year, but we never really know with the wait times that we're seeing right now. If not, we would purchase one, and then we will talk about what to do during the budget process for the shortfall and whether we buy additional cruisers next year instead of to make up for it. And we had a couple of questions at the meeting. I know Nate has done a lot of research on purchasing. I did some research on purchasing. We had questions about group bids through GP COG, about state bid process and all those kind of things. And I think I gave some incorrect information last meeting when I said there, well, it was correct, but not for the reason I thought it was correct. When I said there was no...
Oh, I'm off. Thank you, Dan. When I said there was no state bid, there's actually not a current state bid out, but there was one that expired with, about six months ago. Interestingly enough, it was submitted in 2020, and it was out till 2021, and it expired in May of 2022, and it was for the purchase of 2021 cruisers that actually the state bid came back 1,000 more than our 2021 cruiser bid did, but it's because it's a very specific bid package with very specific equipment. It's actually a good deal if you want that specific equipment in your cruisers for that Explorer body cruiser, but it wasn't what we were purchasing. So and looking and asking a couple other people who've done this for years and years and years, the information I got is that there's virtually little to no difference between what the state bid price is and what they just offer to all municipal police departments, and that the margin on those bids, usually you can go, we can go to other larger collectives, like you could go to, you know, out-of-state group that is buying 20,000 cruisers and try to glom onto that bid, but with the margin of what the savings usually are, it usually is almost always eaten up in transport costs when you get more than an hour or two away from where we are. You know, if you save $500, we're going to be paying more than that to transport the vehicle. So that's really the driving force on why a lot of these things stay local. The distribution is limited and why it kind of trickles down to the local dealership level most of the time, just the economics of distribution and transportation of vehicles. So the good, and I did contact GP COG. They are, would be open to doing joint cruiser bids, but they said very similar to fire truck bids and public works vehicle bids. They can almost never get agreement. They've looked at it before a couple times, and there's almost never agreement between all the towns about what the equipment package would look like. Similar to how our equipment package doesn't look like the state bid for cruisers, they're not confident that everybody would sign on to this exact console package and this exact door lock package and this exact backseat package. Each one of those, if you look at that spec sheet, I think I've got one, here, here we go. I can share that. So this is, like, for example, the state bid sheet. Like, each one of these things, this is typical of a police bid. I know ours looks something similar, right, chief?
Bigger, Peter, so we can see it.
Yeah, not easily, but not full screen, but let's see. Yeah, there we go. So like, these are all the different specs. Like, some of them are, you know, STD is the standard spec, but then all the codes are for different things that are added. So and you'll see the interceptor was 37, and ours were, it came back at about 36, the bid that we put in. So the likelihood of that, this is the state bid spec sheet, just for those that are interested, for this was done in 2020 for 2021, purchase of 2021-year vehicles. So the fact that those would almost never line up between two municipalities and what every single one of those boxes would be checked, that's why GP COG said that there hasn't been interest for municipalities to go in. They're open to it. If there was interest, they said, yeah, sure, we'd evaluate whether there's enough interest and we'd lead that competitive bid process if enough municipalities wanted to do it, so.
Thank you. Counselor Lawrence, you want to open the public hearing, and then we can sort of have our discussion after that?
Sure. Motion to open the public hearing. Second?
Counselor Daniele, all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody from the public who wants to comment on additional appropriation for police cruisers? Nobody online either. I'll assume that that's all we got. Counselor Lawrence?
Make a motion to close the public hearing. Second?
Counselor Daniele, all in favor?
Aye.
And while you're there, why don't you do read the order as well?
Be it ordered that a supplemental appropriation pursuant to Section 6.08A of the Freeport Town Charter and the amount of $20,000 for the capital purchase of police cruisers be approved.
Second? So any questions for the manager, police chief, Counselor Egan?
It's probably more, I guess, for my own education, but I'd love to hear more about the 25 or whatever was specification details that were just provided there and sort of what the pluses and minuses are. It just seems like part of the reason of the dynamic that we're in, where municipalities can't agree on the specification, is because part of it may be that there's so many different things and certain communities want this and don't want that, and it just seems like we're, I get the feeling we're just being played into by the dealers who know that they can divide the buying group into 25 different communities and then have a negotiation on each of those and, you know, potentially make more money as opposed to putting the discipline back on the supplier and say, this is what we need, and there's 10 communities that are going to buy it, and so snap to it, you got to get a better price. I've been watching capital budgets here for over six years, and it's rare that we miss, very rare, that we miss with an estimate. And I know inflation has gone crazy, but it's just kind of sandpaper on me here that we're, that we're subject to this kind of price increase on something that, you know, is pretty required. I'm not taking anything away from the value of the cruiser for the officer. I know that's their number one tool that they have to do their job. So I'm all in favor of supporting this, but it just seems like we're getting played by the dealership group. Anyway, that's my soapbox. I'm going to vote in favor of it.
Counselor Daniele?
I guess I just want to hear that we're very confident that the price won't be lower if we wait until next year, or there isn't going to be like a $20,000 savings, you know, down the road. Like, I know that if we don't do this right now, it's been said that, you know, repair bills will come up and these things, but maybe you could just speak to that again?
Yeah, we're already well into the repair cycle for a lot of our vehicles. We've been...
We've been perpetually behind with cruiser purchases for the last several years. So we, right now, we're pushing ahead problems that have been cropping up for about the last five years. And every time we delay twelve to eighteen months to put a cruiser online or put two cruisers online, we, our budget for repairs, that's one of the areas that we historically run over. And, yeah, we're going back, backtracking a little bit to the bid process. These cruisers can be specced in a number of configurations, bulletproof doors and windows. It can be like a, set up like a presidential limousine. We have a tendency to order bare bones. We, Freeport, traditionally, we always get the cheapest package we can find. We spend a lot of time, and as a matter of fact, we spend so much time and effort to get the lowest price. I talk with about thirty or forty chiefs monthly at chiefs conferences and meetings locally and in district wide. I'm not seeing, talking to anyone who has a magical backdoor where we can save thousands and thousands of dollars per unit. We are, I believe we're getting a very close price to the lowest margin we can get. And it's something we spend a lot of time on, probably more than I should spend on with all the things that we do. I shop for these cars like I would my own vehicle. We get the best possible price and I talk to everyone. And locally, within about twenty-five miles, almost everyone uses about the same bid process, town to town. I'm not seeing a lot of deviation. Portland, Lewiston, Auburn, South Portland, they use some out of state conglomerates to buy their cruisers. The numbers I'm seeing that they're paying are not better than what we're paying. So I can get into the nuts and bolts. This is the stuff that floats in my mind at night. The matrix of these numbers for accessories and door lockers and bulletproof glass and tires and alternators and standby when EVs hit us in the next couple of years, we're gonna take a jump up in complexity, even from where we are now. But, yeah, go ahead.
I want to get on my soapbox again about having councils mess with our capital budget program and vehicle replacements. I've been there, I've done that, it gives us headaches. And a lot of times it ends up being more cost on vehicles and it also ends up with more downtime. So I'm certainly gonna support this tonight. I do think, though, that it would be nice to have a discussion. And if you have, even if you had five or six communities that could agree on something, that would be a step. Who knows? What's it gonna hurt? You know, and maybe, I know the Maine Fire Chiefs Association, we used to bid out gear. We used to bid out administrative vehicles, which are not quite as fancy as the police vehicles, but, and we did come to agreement. So I think that'd be a challenge to throw out to see if, you know, maybe the main chief of police could get together and have a basic package similar to what you got. But I'm certainly supportive of this tonight. Thank you.
I think that these are good comments. We, we're stuck in an interesting situation with procurement of cruisers in general. We're in, right now, we're in direct competition with people who are buying loaded versions of the same vehicles, worst specing. So dealers are allocated a certain amount with post-COVID microchip shortages that you've all heard about on the news. So if they're allocated sixty units in the next quarter, if twenty of them are police cars, they're not, there's not a huge profit margin there that they would get on a civilian vehicle. Not as much, you know, there's no leather, there's no moon roof, we don't have heated seats. So for them to allocate cars for police production cuts into their bottom line. So they're, we, they're actually very hesitant. We struggled to have people do business with us this year. They weren't interested in ones and twos to Freeport. Dodge and Chevy kind of laughed at us. They opened up the bid for one day this year. Dodge did. Chevy opened for three days. Because we have a relationship with some Ford dealers, they were a little more generous. Casco Bay would only bid one vehicle. They wouldn't bid two. This is unprecedented. This is a very strange occurrence for us and I agree. It rubs me the wrong way as well for a lot of reasons. But it's kind of the hand we're dealt right now. I mean, we got a, I think we got a great deal last year. We were way under most of the larger municipalities around us. And then fast forward a year, well, I should say two years ago, fast forward a year and we are ten, almost ten grand per unit more expensive. So obviously, our capital request from four years ago or three and a half years ago is now woefully short. And I feel badly about that.
Councillor Daniele?
What happens with the used units? Do they go and get used by another department?
How much time do we have? Yeah, so normally, used units are sold, traded to a dealer or sold via private sale through the town. Each process takes a different amount of time, a different amount of people who look at the cars and bid on them. Traditionally, Freeport, if you wanted some historical perspective, traditionally, we run our cars so long that they're worth a few hundred dollars when we get rid of them. No one wants them. The last few years, we've, the council's really helped us out in that we've tried to bolster our vehicles so we aren't running the vehicles into the ground as much. And we're kind of spreading the wear and tear out over time, which has a lot of positives that come with it. So when a normal, historically, we might get anywhere from three to seven hundred dollars for a trade-in. Typically, we get a little more if we can sell it. We will put them at the Public Works parking garage. They go down to Public Works. People can go and view them between the hours of eight and five. We can, we'll take bids for those. We've done that before and we receive a little more money, maybe in the thousand to eleven hundred dollar bracket if it's a really good example that doesn't have a blown transmission. Last year, we were able actually to get seven thousand dollars in trade for a vehicle that we traded in, which is the most that we've ever received for a vehicle. Again, it has to do with these unprecedented crazy used vehicle values, right, that we're seeing right now that are hyper, I believe, hyperinflated. So we were able to procure a good trade-in value, which dropped the price of our new vehicle from the thirty-six thousand dollar base price down to twenty-nine and change, which is wonderful. We have some cars that are breaking. We're trying to kind of save the best of the worst from this lot to replace. We're kind of doing a downward shuffle of our, the two vehicles that we'd be replacing. So the vehicles that will come offline will be cars that are in the hundred and thirty to a hundred and fifty thousand mile range. And while I would put many more miles than that on my personal vehicle, police miles are about a four or five to one ratio to civilian miles. So a hundred thousand miles in a civilian vehicle on a police vehicle, that'd be about half a million miles. So the wear and tear that we would put on a car is just astronomically more than you or I would use in our vehicle. So I can get into the weeds with all the nuance.
I think an important thing that you didn't mention is that when they came, right, when we got the delivery of our 2021 vehicle, they were very reluctant to take on trade what they had bid back. Because it was like a sixteen month lead period till we actually got the vehicle delivered and they paid seven thousand. Like, oh, it's depreciated by like two-thirds in these sixteen months while it's been sitting here. And I think the answer the police department gave was, well, toughen, deliver the vehicle quicker next time. And they, they did hold to it because it was contracted, but they, I think that was one of the few wins that we got is that it took so long, we actually got seven thousand dollars for probably what was a worthless vehicle at that time, but.
Correct. They lamented the fact that the bid they gave us during COVID.
Now they had to honor it.
Months, to honor it, they weren't gonna make the, whatever profit margin they were gonna sell it for. So, you know, it's one of the few times the municipality wins, I guess. So it's, this is a strange time, which to try to buy a used or new car. I don't know if anyone else is trying to do it personally. I am trying to find a vehicle. It's strange.
I think councillor Bradley is waiting to jump in as well, so if you're there, Ed.
Ed, you are live. You can speak. Oh, nope. He just...
Virtual hand.
There you go. Yeah, you were live before. Yep.
I listened attentively to all the details. It's a lot of what was said last time. I support it wholeheartedly and I hope we're not giving anybody on the force the impression that in doing our due diligence, we don't support them or what they need, because I have no doubt they do and have no doubt we're in a pickle, but we gotta pay for it. So I don't know whether I get to vote from a phone, but if I don't, I'm for it. If I do, I'll vote when the vote occurs. I just haven't had a chance to jump in at the prior votes.
Okay, thanks. I don't think you can vote, but it's good to hear your support. And I echo what councillor Bradley said. I went over to talk to chief earlier today and got a nice tour of the facility and heard over, over and over that the cars are old and need to be replaced and are a source of consternation among the force. So definitely, you know, happy to try and get some new vehicles on the road. And something that you mentioned to me, or it kind of struck a chord where you said, I think there were, I might have the numbers wrong. You can correct me. Thirty-eight vehicles came available as an allotment and within two hours, all thirty-eight were spoken for. That's how fast the...
The largest fleet dealer in Maine is in Augusta. And they sent out an email on a Monday morning at seven AM or eight AM saying, we have thirty-eight hybrids that are gonna be available. They typically buy a huge allotment and they ended up getting in a big allotment right when there was a big need. So I was, I replied within about two hours saying, you know, speaking out of turn, but saying, we'll take one, just knowing that we have this huge, you know, we're backlog over a year. Took us thirteen months or fourteen months to get our last request. And they were sold out within two hours, all of the units, not even one left. So from there, we went on a waiting list and then they had a large PD who gobbled up eight of them, reneged and could only take six, so a couple became available. So that's how we ended up with that second hybrid option.
Thanks for all the background info. I think, I'm guessing we're ready to take a vote on this one. So we've already got the motion on the floor, so we can go right to the vote. All in favor of supporting the appropriation?
Aye.
And that is all six of us, so let's get to cars.
Appreciate, I appreciate the thoughtful talk. And if anyone wants to come down and kick the tires and look at police cars, the invitation's always open. I appreciate your thoughtful consideration.
Thanks, chief.
Thank you, Nate.
I'll let you sit in one of the seven hundred dollar ones and say that it's a frontline vehicle.
So before we jump to the downtown thing, which is next on our agenda, I've got a question to ask the council about taking something out of order. So our first other business item, no, sorry, our second other business item is a temporary downtown transportation experiment that councillor Bradley was gonna present to us. I think he's gotta get on a plane in about a half hour and I think the downtown thing's gonna take more than half an hour. So given that he's sort of in a unique position to be able to present that, if you guys are okay with taking that out of order, I'd suggest that, Ed, if you're around and are willing, maybe you could present your ideas on that temporary downtown transportation experiment. And we got a bunch of nodding heads here.
Hello?
Yeah, go ahead, Ed.
Hello. Thank you for taking it out of order and I apologize. I had no idea when I left on this trip that I would be in this situation. I expected to be home long before now. But the transportation idea is one that stems really from the downtown visioning. It's embedded in the goals, it's embedded in the projects, but it wasn't specifically identified. And then at the October eleventh meeting, a number of people stood up and said, where's transportation? I said something about it. Since then, we formed a small group to deal with it, which has led to the idea that transportation really has two pieces to it in the downtown. And the downtown should form a transportation hub. One along Main Street for people who use Main Street, who are disabled, who are old, who are carrying packages, who are moving from train stations to hotels, who are moving from a parking lot to the store. The one-time parking idea is one part of the transportation concept. And the other part is using the downtown as a hub to bring people who are in town to shop, maybe, or for some other reason. And the way to keep them here is to get them to some of the outside assets that surround our town. Everything from Desert of Maine to Mansell Park, to the marinas, to the farm at Pen Gill, to the farm at Wolfneck, to Florida Lake. Not sure what all the points should be, but the idea of bringing people from the downtown around town so that we become, as a community, known for more than our retail opportunities. The idea that I'm presenting tonight is really an experiment to see whether the transportation along Main Street makes sense and whether it makes sense in the way in which we're proposing to use it. So I was able to get together with Doug Easton at Desert of Maine, who has a, call it an extended golf cart, but it's an eight-seat cart, all-electric, that we would run along Main Street on routes to be determined at times, to be determined to decide when it works, when it doesn't work, or if it doesn't work at all, or whether it works all the time. Doug has been very generous, I think, in terms of his approach to the town. He said, look, I'd love to see the town use it. I'm not gonna use it at Desert of Maine. I'm gonna sell it. He's allowing us to use it on a license basis initially between now and the spring. And he's asking us to pay a modest amount of money, two hundred and fifty dollars, for that period of time for us to experiment with it. If we, if after the experiments, we decide we wanna try it out in the summer, he's willing to lease it to us on a, for about a thousand dollars. And then if after, if we decide to lease it and use it and we like it, then he'll sell it to us for what he paid for it, which is about nine thousand dollars, and he'll credit us the lease amount. So small amount of money to try something out, zero, really, almost no money to try it out at an experimental basis. There's still some things to do, but in order to know whether we can get going, we have to know that the town, it will allow us to use it on the streets and wants to see us registered as a town vehicle under DMV. Also to get insurance for it so the liability is covered, put it on the town policy. And we've checked in both cases and they're willing, DMV's willing to do it and our town policy's willing to add it if we're willing to take it on as a town project and use the drivers as town volunteers. I've worked with a small committee now, which is Kathy Smith, who's done this in Washington DC. Tony on the chamber is willing to go out and get some sponsorships for it. Mary Davis is, FDCC is willing to work with us as well. And most recently, Eric Smith from the Historical Society. I've also gone out and solicited a number of, call them older Mainers. The people sort of my age who have some time, who are willing to drive this on an experimental basis. I've got five or six mature gentlemen who are willing to put in the time necessary to try it out. So what I, what I need tonight is to know that the council's willing to try this as an initial transportation experiment along Main Street, knowing that there are still some details to be developed and some safety gear to be added. But we need to get going, to register it, to do the documentation with Doug Easton. And then I'll bring it all back as a package to the council for approval if it all comes together. So that's my presentation. I'd appreciate your support. Fair amount of work's gone into it already and it's, I think, totally consistent with what's in the downtown vision. I'm done.
All right. So just for a process point of view, I don't think we need a formal action. We're just looking for a nod that it's okay to spend two hundred and fifty bucks plus or minus a little bit. For Brett to proceed with the concept. So what questions do you guys have for Ed?
Dan, I would add to that. We really need to know that it's okay to go through the process of applying for the license plate and also the insurance coverage. I don't think we need to actually sign on to the insurance until we decide to do it, but I think we ought to get in line to get it. And I also need to formalize the documents with Doug Easton. And there's no sense in doing all that stuff if the council thinks this isn't a good idea.
Yep, good point. Yeah, from my point of view, I think it's a great idea. It's the spirit of the kinds of things we've been talking about with downtown. We try stuff, we pop up, we see what happens, we experiment. This is nice that it's not terribly expensive. You know, my questions that I went through with Ed before are to be clear about what problem we're solving and how we know if it's successful. If a few people take it over a few months, is that a success or is that not a success? Does it have to be fifty people, a hundred people? Are there specific locations we're trying to get them between? Is there a specific audience? So things like that, that, you know, I know he's working through the details and that was my sort of, my take on it, but I think it's worth trying as an experiment, so.
I would agree with that. I don't know that winter time is the best time to try it out, but I don't think it'll tell us very much. I mean, but I do think we should try it and maybe extend it through the summertime.
Well, to Dan, and I think that was Chip that was talking, I think what, well, I'll try... try to do is to get sort of the drivers to keep track of how many people drove it, what distances they did, where they went from and to, in the, in the various times we try it out in. And we've got about, what, three or four months to try it out at different busy times, and we'll try it out in some slow times, and we'll get a sense of whether or not it's, we're meeting a need, or whether we're just throwing something unnecessarily into the mix to complicate things.
For the next couple of months, you think we could make it look like a one horse open sleigh?
Sleigh bells.
That has to be Chip, and you're, you have just signed up to help drive this thing.
No problem.
Do you have a question?
Well, I was just going to comment that, you know, for the amount of money that we're putting into this, it's a pretty low bar to call it success. So I'm 100% in favor. I think it's a great idea. You know, just let's get going on it.
Yep. Okay.
I'll just say that I agree in that I think that this is something that we definitely should do, and that it's a perception thing, too. And so people might see this and be like, oh, Freeport's a pretty welcoming place. And that, and that might not be something we can quantify. But it's, it's clearly a perception changer by having this out there.
Awesome. Thanks. Does that give you enough to go on, Ed and Peter, for next up?
Yeah, it does. I appreciate the sentiments very much. I think you should know that the people who are working on it think it's a great idea, and they hope it works. So we'll be doing all we can to, to give it a fair shot. And we'll let you know how it goes. So thanks. I'm going to sign off because I can do the rest of the meeting. Oh, damn, I can't do the Island Rover. I, so I don't know, Dan, how you intend to handle that. But I, I'm not going to wait till, I'm in an, in an airport about ready to leave in 20 or 30 minutes. So either that's going to go on now, or I'll, I'll, I'll hear what you decided to do. I think Dan knows how I feel about it.
Yeah, we're, next up is downtown, which I know you also have opinions on, too. So we're going to launch into that. Caroline's going to get us teed up for that. And then if you want to stay on for that, you're welcome to, I know how you feel about that as well. And if you have to go, that's fine as well.
Okay, I'm not going to stay on for the downtown because I can watch that and anything we would do, other than add, I hope, transportation to the programs. Now that we've said, not given it a nod, it's not currently specifically listed. But I would hope that it would be after this conversation. Otherwise, all my comments I can make during the budget process or whenever the next council input is.
That's, that's true.
I'm generally very supportive of the downtown plan. That's what I'm trying to say. I don't have any big horribles that I need, I feel like I need to raise.
Okay. Just know that, that I won't be able to see any of the hand gestures you make as you watch the downtown presentation from, from wherever you are. But, but we have talked it like the battle.
I'll be, I'll be in the air.
All right.
Thank you very much for giving me the chance to do this online.
Yeah, thanks for joining, Ed.
Safe flight, Ed.
All right.
It's a lot. Bye bye, guys.
So I'm going to step down and jointly present with Mary. And then at the end of the presentation, the idea is we've got an order here where we're going to ask the council to accept, sorry, get it right, the council to approve the recommendations that we're making. And there is a presentation online that I emailed out to all you guys as well. So let me go down there so we don't have to go back and forth.
I don't think so.
I'm in charge, Dan.
What's the room?
It's kind of surreal. I feel like I'm back. You got like a hate month break from me.
All right, now it's good looking at your last part. Sorry. So we've been putting in a lot of work. This is so exciting. I love being here in May in this room, when we had the presentation, the plan. You know, we had the, the plan was presented to us, and the whole room kind of stood up and applauded. And then we had a similar experience a month ago, October, two months ago, at the community center. So the, the challenge is, as we look at our timeline on the next slide, we'll see this is where we've been, this is where we're going. So we started back in December 2020. Phase one, we were in the thick of COVID. We came up with a few of these experiment pop up things that we were just talking about. We had an early action plan, which had maybe a dozen things in it, maybe five or six of which we were able to accomplish. We learned a ton about how to get stuff done in town. I learned a lot about it. I think everybody involved in the project learned about what should be an easy task is often not an easy task. Phase two, we had a downtown design week, mostly at the, at the high school and in the FPAC, collecting a whole bunch of ideas, starting to put up pictures on boards and get reactions and start the community dialogue. And that continued into phase three with a vision plan. We had an open house here in Town Hall. And one of the most powerful things that happened, I think, was the communication between the residents, the committees, the council, Russ and his team, all of that dialogue. And he said this upfront. He said, one of the better things to come out of a process like this is the fact that we get everybody talking to each other. And to do it over COVID was exceptionally difficult and exceptionally rewarding. I think people were looking for an excuse to come out and be like, this is great. I get to see people in real life again. So anyways, we have the plan, 137 pages was delivered in May. We accepted it. The town certainly seemed like they accepted it as well, judging by their ovation. So then it's like, all right, here's 137 pages worth of stuff. Good luck. So we kind of went into this implementation plan. And that was, I think, a lot of us expressed some concern upfront about, well, are we going to be able to do it? Is this another plan that sits on the shelf? So I took that to heart. And Mary and Caroline and Adam have been working really closely with me to say, can we do something with it? So on the next slide is kind of, this is what we're going to do about it. It's not a perfect plan. We don't have every single edge case mapped out, but we've got a lot of it done. And I think it's a good plan to move us forward, to get us closer, rather than sitting around waiting for things to happen. So we accepted the vision plan in May. Two days later, we started a task force to start talking about how can we make progress? We met every month since then. So we generated a lot of input on what people think is important. Of the 137 pages, we know we can't do it all. What should we start with? I don't think anybody came up with anything in the plan where we said, that's a bad idea. We don't want to do it. We came up with a lot of ideas about, we should probably do this before we tackle that, or that's something that might be able to wait a year. But that, that was our, our mandate, I think, is to say, what, where do we start? What do we start with? And that's what we spent the last six months or so doing, that we kind of got there by October. And that's when we hosted the workshop at the community center to say, how did we do? Did we do okay? And I think we got mostly a collective nodding of heads from the 8,000 people in town or the 120 that showed up. And we had the council there, and we didn't hear any loud objections. So I think we're on the right track. So the next slide is a little bit more detail about that task force. There was no formal process. We didn't appoint a committee like we did the housing task force, or the sewer task force. It was a, an organic committee. We said, we're going to have a public meeting. Anybody who's interested should show up. And, and we did reach out to board and committee chairs in particular, because we knew they had vested interests in a lot of these things. So they showed up. And we got about 40 people all together. So there's a slide at the end where I added everybody's name to it. But over 40 people have been showing up at least at some of these meetings over the last six months, representing 23 different organizations. And these are the things that we set out for ourselves, the, these six bullets here. Coordinate between committees, which is something that I heard a lot. I don't know what those guys are doing in that committee. I have ideas for where I think, as an example, where I think trees should go, because they're, they help contribute to the sustainability. But, well, complete streets needs to weigh in on that, because they weigh in on where the sidewalks are and things like that. So there's a lot of cross committee communication that needed to happen, and this is a place to do it. There's no other time when we have representatives of different committees talking to each other. So just having that meeting is valuable. And it gives them a chance to communicate about, this is what's going on with my project. And it's, it's a way for them to get requests into us. How do I get a request to the council? Before, that was a little bit opaque. Now it's like, here's one way to do it. We'll meet, we'll learn about your project. And if we see a need, we'll, we'll add it to our list and see if we can get the council to approve it. And then we include it in our recommendations. And it's, it's a very public process. We're not doing anything behind closed doors. We don't go and smoke cigars and drink scotch and dream up plans. Everything we do is out in the open. And the four of us is kind of stepped up to, I'd say, be de facto leaders. We didn't vote. Nobody appointed us. We just kind of stepped in to say it's, it needs to happen. So the next slide is, yeah, so the, we're not a limiter. We're not saying if you don't go through the task force, your project won't happen. That's not what we're saying at all. We're saying if you have a good idea, if there's a good idea that came from the plan that you really want to see happen, we might be able to make it happen quicker. We might be able to smooth out some, some roadblocks. So that, that's our mission, I think. And if you click once more, this is that, how that process looks. So there's a project that may have come from the Freeport Downtown Vision. The Freeport Downtown Vision Task Force may have groomed it, I'll say, prepared it, brought it to the council like we're doing tonight with the list of 21 things that we'll talk about. And then the council's really the ones who get to make the call, right? You guys are going to say, yeah, we have money to appropriate for this, or we think it's a worthwhile endeavor, or we don't. So the decisions all happen up there. We're just kind of grooming the projects. However, like I said, not all the projects go through the task force. So another way a project could happen, two other ways. One is, it could be a, a new project that wasn't part of the original 137 page downtown plan, but it's a good idea. So let's say, a golf cart that goes up and down Main Street, right? That wasn't an item in the plan, but it's a good idea. So if we can help with that, we will. And then one more is other projects. This is the ones that, that don't come through the, the task force. I've got a great idea. Wasn't in the plan. Task force doesn't want to talk to me about it, or I don't want to wait for them, or for whatever reason, it's not appropriate. I'm just going to bring it to council. That's happened in the past. That can continue to happen. We're not saying that we've got any claim to, to be a gatekeeper for the council. And that leads to established projects with resources that have been allocated by the council and potentially help from the task force. And then lastly, on this slide, I think, yeah, if you've got a project that doesn't need town resources, then you don't need to come and ask permission. All right? Caroline's giving me the grin. You might need to ask for a permit. But, but if you don't need, you know, if you're going to do chalk on your sidewalk or something, you know, if you're going to do something in, in town that doesn't need town staff, town money, you know, we want to encourage it. We don't stand in the way. So that's sort of where we've been, the process, the structure. I'll talk to the next slide, and then I'll turn it over to Mary so that you're not listening to me all night. Like any strategic plan, these, it started with our values. These are the values that we got from our consultant, that we all kind of adopted as a town. These guiding principles guided everything else that we did. So they guided from these kind of high level values. They guided some goals, which guided some projects and so on and so forth. And Mary's going to walk us through how that goes. But this is the root of everything that we've been doing for, for downtown. So, Mary.
Thank you. Thank you. So go ahead. Yeah. So how we got here, how we got to the point where we have the projects that we are, you've seen this funnel before. We talked about it very early on in the downtown visioning, that the whole idea of the visioning was to create a funnel of ideas that would go into sort of this, how do we think about which one are the right to come to the bottom? And so from this, you know, we started out with the downtown vision plan with consultant recommendations about what they thought that we should do. That led to 25 goals, 45 projects, and then they had these 10 catalyst sites that they told us to pay attention to. So we started with those. Then when we pulled together the task force, the task force had a lot of different ideas and reasons while, why these got narrowed down to nine goals and 12 projects. Some of it was capacity. Some of it was truly what should be done first. We need to do this before we can do that. And the committees who really thought about this went back, we have representatives on the task force, but they went back to their boards and said, what do you think? What do all of you think? And when you look at this list of 40 people who have had input into this, these are kind of the leaders of all of our committees in town. It's a really impressive group of people who thought about, how do we sequence this so that it makes sense? Capacity is a big issue. And so we did talk a lot about capacity, and you'll see that in the slides when we go through. So the idea is, tonight, we're bringing those nine goals and 12 projects. It's not because they're the only ones that are important. It's more because what these folks are saying is they're the first ones we need to do. So if we get those done and we create more capacity, we can come back and review and do others as we go along. But let's start with what we believe are the most crucial ones first that will get us momentum going. So tonight, we're here with the council to take your direction. So what are the three categories? And what, how are they different? So the goals are really intended to be more of like a high level guidance. This is a goal that goes over all of our projects. And you'll see those. Dan is going to go through all of these goals that we have in place. It's more like a high level guidance that talks about how we think about everything that we do underneath. Of the original 25 goals that were there, some of them you've already incorporated into what we're doing as a town. Like things like eco-friendly park months, complete streets, we've already incorporated those. So we're bringing in the next, what we believe are nine that should go forward with us now. There's still another nine or so that were in those goals, but I think we're not quite ready for them. There's more discussion that needs to be done on them, like one of them was about creating more downtown access. We're just not ready to do that yet. So we're going to bring forth with you today, those nine recommended for advancement now. Those are the goals. The projects are, are defined projects with a deliverable. So you're going to see that these projects are everything from redesigning our process to new, new ordinances. But these are actual deliverables. So they have a, a project plan with a timed sequence and a deliverable at the end. That's how we separated them. And again, of their original 45 projects, some of them are already being done. Some of them are already in work now. We're bringing forth another 12 that we think should be moving forward now. And you're going to see that these are ground setting projects for all of us that will set the ground for later on. 18 are in the backlog. Again, it's not because they're not important. It's simply because with the sequencing, it seemed like these 12 were the most important. And then when we talk about the catalyst sites, there are 10 catalyst sites. These are important locations to us that if you look in the downtown plan, we should always keep into account as, as we're doing these projects, how to best leverage those catalyst sites. They're important to the downtown and how we work with them is important. So that's kind of how we got to these three categories and how we got here. So if we go to the next slide, where are we trying to go from here? We want a green light from you to continue. We don't have projects completely defined with all the dollars, but we want a nod from the council that says, it seems like this is the right direction for you, because we have all these groups that want to go forward and make things happen. And so we want to be able to give them the green light, because there's a lot of work, as you know, that goes into project planning and finding resources and all those sorts of things. So we're looking for a, a green light from you. Once we get that, then those groups will start on their project charters, their resource requests, they'll, again, being mindful of capacity. And then our plan is to come back to the council on a quarterly basis with, where are we? What's happened? From what you've agreed to, what's happened? Where have we done? Because I think, as Dan said, we always learn things. You know, we walk away saying it's going to be one way, and then we start to do the implementation and say, you know, whoopsie, you know, that wasn't exactly as easy. So we want to have regular routine updates with you, too, to say, where are we? We want this plan to be implemented. And we think that with the, with the time commitment of the council and these groups, we'll keep the momentum going. So we want to come back quarterly. Okay. So we have, if we go for it, nine recommended goals. And Dan is going to go briefly through these goals to give you an idea of what those are. We don't have, you know, the rest of the evening to go through details of every goal and every project. We're going to try to do highlights for you. There are some of the individuals here that are here that are participating. They may be able to answer questions. Again, we're not trying to ferret out every one of them now. We're just trying to give you a highlight of kind of how we came up with them. So I'm going to let you go through the goals. I'm going to ask you to skip by the next slide, which is the 12 projects. And I'll come back to that after Dan's just done with the goals. Okay?
Thanks, Mary.
Yep.
So, yeah, so I, trying to balance between speeding through these lightning quick in the interest of time, but also giving them the importance they deserve. So I'm going to err more on the former. I'm going to kind of go through things quickly and leave it to you guys to say, hey, that thing you mentioned, the goal number three, I want to come back and talk more about that. So again, goals, they're not deliverables, they're not projects, they're more guidelines. And the, what I would ask you to think of in the back of your head, is this a guideline I can get behind that I think Freeport should get behind? So the first one, vehicle miles traveled. It's a combination of things. It's about safer biking and walking. It's about public transit. It's about, if we do development, put the development near the transit so that people can walk and don't have to drive everywhere. It's about applying for some transportation planning grants that we've already done with FDTC, that we're hoping can help sort of answer some of these questions in the future. So, so that's the kinds of, of guideline that we want to put out to our boards, committees, other people working on this, to keep in the back of their minds as they propose projects. Next up is explore redesigning Main Street. This is a big one. This is where a lot of Russ's pictures were about people sitting on cafes outside on Main Street and walking around while cars drive by and nobody gets hit. and walking around while cars drive by, and nobody gets hit. The goal specifically starts with explore redesigning Main Street. This is not a goal that says, we're going to redesign Main Street, we're going to repave, we're going to widen it or narrow it. It's a goal that says, we should really be thinking about this, and we need to think about it carefully. And there's a lot of different pieces that go into that. You know, the vision would be, it's a more pedestrian experience, that has gathering, and strolling, and more seating, and slower traffic. But there are a lot of things that could stand in the way, like all the acronyms in the second half of the slide there. But we already have made some progress. We've, you know, as a council, we've allowed some more temporary outdoor seating, we've done some on-street parklets, those are all things that are, could contribute to this. But the rest of this is really, it's a lot of research, it's a lot of thinking, it's a lot of talking to Department of Transportation, other towns, stakeholders, seeing like, is this something that could really work in Freeport? Or because of our unique situation with Main Street being the primary thoroughfare, is it just not for us? And we don't know, but we wanna explore it. Next is one we've talked about, encourage multifamily housing, and mixed-use development, specifically in downtown. Since we started doing downtown work, and have talked widely about it, and put it in the newspapers and things like that, developers have come forward saying, Freeport's got some stuff going on, I need to be there. And we've seen evidence of that with projects that have been proposed. And at a high level, we think we wanna see more of that, right? We don't know exactly where, we don't know exactly how many parking spots we need versus housing we need, but we know we need more housing. We've got a new housing task force, which I think will do the bulk of this work. But this is sort of a big one. Do we really want to promote multifamily housing downtown? I think the answer is yes, I'm looking to get confirmation. Next up is public art, briefly. So this is about establishing Freeport as a place, right? Public art contributes to that. This is what I see when I go to Freeport, I see a giant boot. That's kind of the only public art we have, and that's not entirely public. Everything else we have is, we don't have public art, and part of that is because the regulations don't allow it. You can't do a mural in town now. We don't have places designated for public art, we think that needs to change. And next up, relatedly, is the actual arts and cultural programming. So we, I think we're all big supporters of that, we've done a lot in that realm. There's a specific project that talks to this as well. But we wanna support all of the stuff that these groups are doing, because Freeport's very active, as is the Chamber Meeting House Arts. We've got a few people from Meeting House Arts here tonight. Freeport Players had a big show last week, and these are all things we think contribute to downtown. Recruit a mix of local businesses, local, regional, national businesses. Russ talked about the ideal mix being a third, a third, and a third, right? We've been heavy on the national businesses, and we've kinda over-relied on them, and we got in a little bit of trouble because of that. So we wanna diversify. FEDC's been doing a lot of great work, they have a new website, I feel like Mary should be talking about this part, a new website targeting businesses. Here are all the sites in town where you can locate your business, here's the demographics for Freeport, here are some reasons to locate here. They have a new CRM system to track people who are interested in coming to Freeport. What's, what door do they walk through first, what's their experience, how can we help them? And were they successful, or were they not successful? So we can start to collect some statistics on that. The last bullet point on that slide is an interesting one. When we talk about specifically what can we do, these are some things that are starting to come up. I'm not asking for any commitments to them, but just start to think about them. Business facade grant program, Brett's done this in a couple other towns, it's worked really well. It can be externally funded, so we get a grant, and then we ask businesses to match the money that we're going to grant them, if they've improved their facade. And it doesn't have to be just a facade when we implement it. TIFs are probably gonna come up, in terms of, should we talk about that? But in the back of our minds is, these are just tools, but the tools are meant to make downtown a better place. So that's, I think, what we need to be focused on. Alright, next up is downtown being a hub for trail connections. There's a lot of stuff in Freeport that's not downtown, but our vision is, you come downtown, and that's the starting point, the sort of star-shaped or hub-and-spoke idea, right? This is the starting point to get to the mountain bike trails, Wilson State Park, all the other things. Maybe Ed's new transportation idea will help with that. But there's some stuff going on already, I know Jake's been really involved in a lot of this stuff too. I'm leaving out names, there are so many people that have been involved in that, in all these things. So I apologize for that, but this, I think, is an important one, that hub idea. Next is a downtown that supports people and families of all backgrounds and abilities. So yes, it's about accessibility, it's about being age-friendly, it's also about diversity. So, we wanna do it all, it's hard to do. There's been some interesting studies that people have been talking about in the last week, about how accessibility is actually a draw. People will come to towns that are accessible, and say, I'd rather go to Freeport, 'cause I know I can get around in Freeport. And that comes with some economic benefit as well. And some of this, we know we might need to help businesses think about how they can make accessibility improvements. Some of that's by fiat, we say you have to, because the law says you have to, and we have to enforce it. And some of it is, well, you might not be required to, but we'd really like you to, and if there's a way we can help you do it, we'd really like to do that. And then, I think lastly, on the goals, is creating a flexible and multifunctional civic space. Again, this is a goal. We have a project for the Town Hall Park, which is really one way of instantiating this. But there's a lot more we could do, and this is probably one that's not as well-fleshed out as some of the others, but the idea is, we have these well-connected public spaces around town, and we want more of them. So that's what this is about. Turn it over to Mary for the details on the projects.
So I know that's a lot. But when you look at the goals, I think the one thing that makes me feel good about those goals, is look how much is being done. So, the downtown vision created enough of an idea of what needed to happen, that people are just doing this. I mean, you all are good examples of, you came forth with, let's put these projects in. So, I know, I know this is a lot, but our role in the portion of the goals is to define goals that other people can take and make happen. That's what the whole business. So, now I'm gonna go to the projects, and these are projects that are very specific. They're first-up projects that support longer term. Some of them are big, some of them are smaller, all of them are building blocks, and many of them are building infrastructure or plans. So, the one thing that you're gonna see from these, is that they're probably gonna lead to other action items that come out of them, of these 12 projects that are up here, 'cause many of these are plans that say, we need to understand what we wanna do, so that we can start enacting them. So I think you'll see, once we get the plans in place, it'll come. So, the first one, of course, we just heard about, didn't we? We did. We heard about, you said, we've got money for the sustainability coordinator, and we have monies for the climate action, and you're already starting to do, implement a project about how do we exchange out heat pumps, so that we're taking care of it. So, but this is the project around, let's make sure that we have a plan in place, and that we get that done. So this is tracking it. The second thing is on an established and emergency management plan. And Chief Conley has been working on that, he's already got it well in gear, but there's still a lot of things to do on this. So again, this is focusing on, how do we get a plan in place for these two things, so that we're building the infrastructure that we need? And each of these projects, you are gonna see that there's status, there's next steps, and there's resources that are needed. One of the focus of all the folks who did the projects was to look at, we're not looking at town funding for everything. As you noticed, there's a lot of opportunities that we're looking for grants. So, we're trying to find grants, we're trying to find other ways to be able to fund these, so that we can do the projects. Because of course, everyone in Freeport is also, I've had so many people say to me, this downtown vision is really great, but how are we gonna afford it? So we're being conscious of that. So on each of these, you also have a project lead, and you have a facilitator, which is one of the four of us in this team. Because the idea is, again, these plans, these projects are gonna need more help and support to get them through. So that was the infrastructure we put in place. Okay, let's go to the next one. EV charging stations. This is another one that might be smaller, but we think it's a really visible way of moving forward. If we did this at the municipal facilities that we already have, wouldn't it be a great way to be able to show the community that we're serious about moving to more energy-efficient vehicles? So, this again, you'll see funding, and how much it is, it's time associated with it, but we have some great people that are leading it, that are looking at where to put it, and how to put it, and are thinking about it. Next. So now, this is the same EV charging stations, but also talking about developers, and making sure that as developers are coming in with housing or new developments, that they're thinking about how to put EV charging stations in. So far, the folks that have come have said absolutely, that's one of the things that we have to do now. Yep?
I just wanna point out that every project that Main Housing funds across the state has a requirement that there's capacity and infrastructure for EV charging. That's in affordable housing. You don't have to hang the charger, but you gotta have all the infrastructure, conduit, panel capacity, et cetera. Same thing for rooftop solar.
That's great, that's great.
It's already here.
Right, right. So this is a way for us to be able to kinda follow through with what other people have done in other places, to assure that we're moving in the right direction. Again, good group of people that are following it. And that's one, it doesn't take money from us necessarily, it's just talking with developers on the early-on stages, that we want them to make sure that this is part of it.
Mary, do you mind if I jump in on this, since John brought it up? I know we don't wanna focus too much on the details yet, but this is one of those where, like, it's a question, right? I don't think this is a recommendation, yeah, just rubber stamp it and move it on. A lot of, there's two sides on this one. Do we need to mandate that developers must put EV charging stations in? Or is the market saying that they have to do it anyway? A lot of the people that we're talking to are saying, yeah, I wouldn't do a development without EV chargers, 'cause my residents are gonna want it. So it's a question, really, for everybody to weigh in on. Should we sort of ask the planning board to continue looking into this or not?
It's interesting, it's kinda to your point too, of the heat pumps. The developers that are coming to us, they're putting in heat pumps, they don't even think about it. Right, they don't even think about it, they're past that point. But that's a question for us to decide in this project. Okay, go ahead, the next one. Okay, so the next one is, here's your Mallet Drive and Route 1 South. This is a big project. And this is to begin the planning, because we're at an opportune time. We're already doing all sorts of work on Mallet Drive, so let's get a plan done about what we want it to look like in the end. Do we really wanna change it over? Do we wanna make it a back path? Do we wanna put trees down to the middle of it? What do we wanna do? So this is the idea of, we need to have a plan in place, because, you know, you can see all the paving that's done. We need to have a plan in place that shows what we want this to look like at the outcome. Because the decisions that are gonna lead to next actions about how that goes. Makes sense? Okay. Next. This is about creating an accessibility map, because I think, as Dan, you said, there are towns that take accessibility so seriously, that they attract people who are, have accessibility needs. And those towns end up getting more people coming to them, it becomes a draw. It's also important for us, 'cause so many people say to us, you know, that hill is hard to walk up, from the train station up to the top, especially when it's icy. Or, tell me where your trails are, which ones are more accessible? Where can I push my baby car? Where can I push my bicycles? Where can I go? So this one, again, is not, it's not a lot of money, but it is coming up with, what does this map look like? So we can communicate it to people who are coming here. Visit Freeport would love to have this, so that they can communicate to visitors on their way in. So, you know, we know our names here, Sally has a passion for this, so, this is a wonderful one for us. Okay. Parking requirements for downtown. Boy, have we ever talked about parking in downtown. And we know that we're gonna come at this juncture, like, so many people say to me, where's the, where's the road? You know, where is the, how much parking is too much, how much parking is too little, when do we hit that juncture point? And so we really need to understand the parking requirements for downtown. So this is funding. We applied for a grant to help us have the monies that we need, to do the study that we need to do. Because we think that this, again, this is a cornerstone of how we think about new developments. We have to understand what we're doing with parking, so we don't swing the other way. Nobody wants to get to the point where we went from too much parking to too little parking. So this is getting in front of that. Alright, next. This is one that Caroline just loves, streamlining the permitting process. We know that we've been told by so many folks that we're pretty tough to work with. And so, this is like, it's big as far as time, it's not much as far as dollars, but it's big on time. And it's big on time on these folks that you're seeing here, on the planning board, to help think about, and the process, and the PRB board, to help think about, how do we look at our processes in a way that make them easier, not only for developers to follow, but more economical for our staff to manage? Because, you know, for lots of reasons, we came up with all the processes that we did now, but maybe it's just time to relook at them. Okay, next. Okay, and the other side of that, of course, is updating the zoning for the downtown. We know that there's some things that are in our way, that we need to take care of. We've already done some of them to help us get there, but now it's time to kind of look at that. We already have funding that's been approved for 2023, to help the planning department do some of this. Again, it's time, it's energy, it's brain power from Caroline and staff, to figure out which ones we do, and from the planning board. So, very important for us to start to think about how to untease the zoning, so that zoning makes more sense. Okay, here we love that. Okay, so this is local arts program, but it's building public infrastructure. So how do we make sure we have the right infrastructure to support all the wonderful programming that we wanna do here? You know, town park has already been designed and permitted, and that will be a lovely, nice, new area for us to be able to do public art. So it's how do we continue to do that? You know, we got that, that nice grant from T-Mobile, so again, you're seeing, we're trying to find monies to do this, we're not coming back to the town for all of it, but we wanna make improvements, so we have great places to have that. Alright, next one. Oh, and here's one that we just love, we love the sewer system, right? It really started out, it started out interestingly, in that we were talking about sewer connection fees, 'cause that's what we heard most about. But I think now, where the group who's been working this has come, is it's kind of a more of a global working with the sewer district to understand how we can work together to get where we need to go. You know, if you look at our, it came up in the downtown, of course, because our businesses all in downtown are on the sewer. But if you look at the primary portion of our businesses, which are Route 1 South, and in the downtown, they're all in the sewer system. So it becomes something that we need to pay attention to. So, you've put together a group to be able to start to think about it, but again, we think this is one that we really need to pay attention to, because it's just been flagged so often. Go ahead, next. Wayfinding. How many people, how many people say to you, geez, where is the, you know, where's L.L. Bean? Well, that's a whole nother instance, but where are parks? Where are the places we can go bike? Where are the things that we can go to? We had that unbelievable weekend that was the Makers on Main Weekend, where we had people that were backed up all the way on the highway to the other exit. I don't know if you knew that, but they were, the cars were all the way backed up. And they were, Jay Polis was standing on the road, and he was trying to say, you know, parking that way, 'cause there's no signs, there's nothing that takes them there. So the whole idea of this is, how do we do a better job of wayfaring? And there's a lot of science around this now, and we actually have an expert in our community who knows wayfaring. This is what he does as a business. So again, this is more like, we need a plan of how to do it, so that any new signs that come in, or any new things that we're doing are consistent with whatever we want. So this is more about getting a plan in place. Kelly Edwards wants to drive that, she would love to have a great signage in town. Okay. And, the last one. We think a lot about all the parks that we're creating, about the open spaces that we're creating, about all these lovely spaces that we're having around, but I've heard all these stories about, who is the gentleman who used to wander around and tell people to clean their acts up? You all know who he was.
Ed Bradley?
No, it's not Ed Bradley. It was George Denny, right? Who used to be like, we need to get this cleaned up, we need to make sure this is in place. And so, as we're looking at creating some of these things now, we also have to have, we have to keep it clean, we have to keep it updated. And so this is really sort of starting to think about, how are we gonna maintain it all? As we start to create more parks, and create more places where people wanna be, guess what? It creates like more mess and more cleanup. So, this is our final project. Okay. So, the last slide, I think, has, so here's all the list of people who have been working on all these. Again, I'm standing up here with Dan, and there's a few people in the room, but this is really a very deep group of people who have come forth with their passions. They're the ones who are gonna get all this work done. They're the ones that are signing up and saying, I will get this done. It's super exciting to be involved in this kind of energy. What Principal has told us is, this is wow, you know? You gotta stand back and say, this is a wow moment for Freeport. Freeport's really passionate about getting it done. So, and from this is gonna be get more. Right? It will, right? So, there are goals in our projects, that we are saying are the first ones for us to start working on. So now, we're gonna zip it, and let you talk.
Karen, can you go back to the slide, have the goals all listed on one? That might be a good one, that might be one of the projects, one people can toggle between.
Yep, so there's the goals, and then on the next slide is the list of projects. Yep?
What questions do you guys have?
They're overwhelmed.
I mean, this is incredibly impressive. The lift that the four of you have done, in addition to all the other volunteers, is incredible. And, you know, we should be very proud to have people like this in our town. One concern I have, is how we continue that forward. I mean, the momentum's really strong right now, but... I mean, the momentum's really strong right now, but you guys could win the lottery and move away. I mean, these are realistic things. We're short on town staff and we're relying heavily on a core group of volunteers, and that's honestly not sustainable. And I know, I've talked to Brett about his work previously with the Main Street Program. I'd like to see us focus some thought on how we carry this forward in a sustainable way, bring in additional resources to help us because we're not the first town to go through this. And there are a lot of resources that could be available through being an affiliate of that program. And I think we keep the momentum going and do good work, and good people will step up and new people will step up. But I'd like to have a process or a thinking in place for, I mean, eventually you guys are going to want to step away and bring on new people. I mean, I think we just need to be mindful of that. And I don't mean that as a damper on what we're doing now, but I'm just thinking like, this is step one of like 50 that we need to be thinking about.
Yeah, I think that is, in the actual plan itself, you know, Russ said you might want to have somebody who's leading this because to keep the momentum up and going, it is a lot of work. There are a lot of hours that are put into it because it's not just like being here talking to you. It's then going back to all the people who are doing all the great work saying, "What are your roadblocks? What's in your way? How can we help you get them out of the way?" Because every time you do one of these projects, the devil in the details that gets it all done. So, and you're right, there are towns who have it within their structure that there's a person who leads a big thing like this. So, I mean, it is something interesting to think about. You know, Dan and I had this discussion yesterday about, about how much, you know, how much time, how much do y'all want to see me as we go forward?
Yeah, this is the Mary and Dan Show, then we've done it wrong, honestly. Because it can't be. We're happy to get it going and facilitate. We're not doing the work. We're kind of helping people get the work done. And I mean, I'm glad you brought it up because I'll tell you my assumption, which is that what Russ gave us the report and said, "You guys need another group called Be Freeport" to coordinate all this stuff." And my gut reaction was, wait, we need another group in addition to Visit Freeport and the Chamber of Commerce and FEDC and the Town Council and the Town Plan? And he said, "Yeah, you do." And he explained it, and I kind of slowly started to get on board. My assumption is it would be difficult to get everybody to agree that, yeah, let's fund yet another position and put some more dollars towards getting another person to do something that's falling between the cracks of these other organizations. So I don't know. At some point, I think we're going to be there. My read of the room is that we're not there yet, and we're stepping in just to fill the shoes on a temporary basis. But that, it's not us permanently.
John?
Following up on that, I agree with Councilor Pillsbury. I'm wondering if maybe a bridge solution to that is twofold. One is rather than going through the process of creating and then hiring, trying to recruit and hire a position, if we contract for it for 20 months, 24 months? And that maybe the first task of that contract is actually to write a communications narrative across all of this. Because I think one of the ways to get the energy amplified to a broader section of the community is to be telling the broader section of the community all about it. We have all the choir members here in this room, but we need, we need thousands of people singing this song. So, it's a bad metaphor. Thousands of people singing just doesn't sound good. So, you know, we've kicked around the idea of having a communications coordinator within Town Hall. Maybe we can sort of get to some of those net effects of that by taking a look at a contract with the right firm that can do initially the communications narrative and secondarily to help add some momentum and energy to a lot of the tasks that are involved here. At least, if nothing else, just kind of running around and coordinating, connecting the 12 different activities to each other. That could take a lot of the energy off the core principles that are moving the programs forward now.
Sorry. When the consultants kind of ended their work, one of the things we lost was that communications ability, capacity, bandwidth, because they were really good at that. The question asked Peter yesterday was, what are the odds that, you know, mid-year we may have money to hire a communications director earlier than waiting for July 1st to get it approved to then start the hiring process? That's only one of the pieces of the, all the stuff that you just ran through, but it would be a pretty big piece. So if we know we want to have that person permanently on board and we can start that process early and use this as partially an excuse to do it, I'm all for it. I could also see it being more something like you mentioned, which is communications and coordination and all the other things that the group could do on a temporary basis. I'd be a big yes on either of those things.
So I think the thing that becomes interesting about is as we develop more committees for more good reasons, like the housing, and the more we develop those, the more, again, you've got that coordination that goes across and having somebody who's the, you know, it's the middle brother who makes sure that everybody is working together and creating enthusiasm and excitement and, again, helping people get through the roadblocks. Because the thing that I saw when we did the early action plans is that when you get into the midst of those roadblocks, it's hard. You know, it's hard, and you need somebody standing beside you to say, "Come on, keep going, keep going, keep going. We're going to do it. We're going to do it." So, yeah. Good question.
I'd rather see a contracted person. If we hire a full-time person, they're going to get torn in 37 different directions from day one. I think if we bring in a contracted person with the specifics to address this, and maybe the contract extends, you know, we do it for a 12-month period of time, we evaluate where we are, we move on. I'm not sure if I agree to 24 months at the gate, but certainly that's something I've been advocating for on a lot of other committees. I think we tend to burn people out here very quickly and where...
Me?
Well, there's a number on the list, Mary.
I know, I know. There's a lot, there's a lot there.
You know, let's not, let's not, you know, get to the point where we burn everyone out and we lose all momentum. So, and maybe, you know, FEDC has some recommendations on other people that have done that. And I think that is a position to be looking at that I would be in support of as opposed to a full, another full-time position here that's going to, you know, get overloaded.
Have you guys looked at who is going to be next in your type of position? I mean, in what you're doing now, who are you grooming to be, okay, I got another year left of this, who's, you know? I mean, that's, that's just something to think about, but that typically...
Yeah, I think it's all part of the same conversation, right? If we do contract with someone, or does it become something that...
We get contracted with someone to do this, but we still need the steering committee to say, for him to go to and who is, so who's going to be?
Yeah, I think, I think that is a great question because to say that this was, it hasn't been a small amount of time. It's been a fairly large amount of time to help this happen. And it also is that, you know, it's that like, you got to be enthusiastic even when behind closed doors you're like, "Whoa." You know? So it does take energy and, you know, and I would also say, from a council perspective, you all have been great about supporting this. So also, how from a council perspective do you continue that as you change seats? Because we would never be here had it not for the great council support that we had two years ago. So, yeah, thank you.
I don't think we are changing seats.
Not for a while, not for a year.
So if we move forward with all these projects as recommended, and you've said, as we get into them, problems come up, things change, the path moves. What's your, how do you envision adjusting to those changes and getting sort of reauthorization? Or, I mean, I just don't understand as we go from here, how we stay engaged with the path we're on, if that makes sense?
Yeah, I think there are two key things. One is the projects you saw all had funding, staff time, community time. So we wanted to do this and layer it into the schedule so that if we get the go-ahead tonight, we can then do the homework and say, "Okay, we'll come back and say it's, here's the line item that we'd like you to add to the budget when we do budgeting between February and May." So we want to have that ready to go. So you have that, and that'll be annually because we do our budgets every year. And then in addition to that, Mary said, "We're going to come back every quarter and not go into as much detail, but maybe, I don't know what format we use, but we could pick three or four projects and say, 'This is, this is the update on this one, or this is the roadblock on that one. Do you still want to do it?'" You know, we looked into Main Street, we found this thing, it might be a roadblock. Should we just stop doing it? So, but we do want to have those quarterly updates, even if they're all positive. Everything's going great. Look at all the great work that's been done. So those are the two points.
And I also think it gives the community an opportunity to hear what's going on with all these, all these groups that are working. You know, when we went to the community room, one of the really cool things was watching the community members talk to all of these folks and saying, "Wow, what are you doing? Why are you doing, how are you doing this?" And I think having those presentations here, you know, even though we don't get a ton of people actually here, they watch it because they tell me they watch it. And so I think it's important that we think about how, what we bring to you every quarter so that you're seeing a more of a deep dive into the projects as well as like what has changed, you know? Because there will be things that change. Good question.
Do you envision having more community, a more formal community engagement process as we get further down the road? I mean, like, I think it's, I mean, this is the fullest the room's been in a long time. So, I mean, Tuesday night is a tough sell for a lot of people.
Here's my, go ahead.
The thing that has been amazing is when we had those town meetings, okay, before that last meeting at the, at the, at the community center, Dan and I were like, "Oh my gosh, I hope there's 25 people here." And there were 125 people there. So I do think it's important as a part of the community involvement in this. That's why this was so successful. That's why we got so many people to give input. That's why we have so many people now who are ready to do things because they were involved in the beginning. So the way that we continue to pull the community in to, I don't know, whether you call them shreds or town hall meetings or whatever you call them, it's a way to be able to bring people in and say, "We're still interested in what you think." You know, just because, you know, we've moved forward, so.
Yeah. I look at it as more like an umbrella or a banner. So there are probably certain projects, like when we get to the Mallett 1 Boulevard, yeah, we're going to be doing a lot of public input, design shreds, things like that. And to the degree that we continue the momentum, like John pointed out, like if we keep talking and bragging about, "Look at how great Freeport is. Look at what we're doing with our downtown," that only serves to bring in development, but also bring the community back to the table. So I can't answer, it's every six months we're going to have this or every, because we can't overdo it and people will get burned out. But yeah, we need to keep the momentum going. That's the thing that keeps me up at night is I would hate to see this thing kind of just wither and evaporate.
Yeah, maybe we can do it, you know, each, each, at least once a year, when we break up into our districts, we can talk about, here's what's going on in the district as far as the downtown.
Awesome. That'd be so good.
And that's...
That'd be so good, yeah.
Was it, Darrell, didn't you come up with the idea of doing a town meeting kind of a thing? I don't know if it was you, but somebody came up with that idea saying, "We don't have an official town meeting to do town meeting business." But wouldn't it be great to have a reason once a year when we do a lot of stuff that has more public interest than some of the stuff we typically do?
Yeah, because those used to be a lot of fun.
I'm sure.
You know, the town were engaged and it wasn't all that long ago. But I want to back up. We talk about having budget requests, budget proposals coming up. So, you know, if we're looking at a contracted position, you know, I guess I, I'm envisioning, yeah, it's an expenditure we may have in the budget, but we've got contingency funding that's got there that maybe we could bring someone on here in the next couple of months. And not officially look to July 1st because, again, that slows the process down. And I looked at that totally different if we looked at a different funding mechanism as opposed to full-time. And again, we talk about the benefits of having people, one of the discussions we've had is a kind of a steering person on grants and stuff, which we're doing now. And thanks to FEDC for taking that big project on, doing a great job with it. But there's an example that is successful. We're seeing success with it. So let's, let's, you know, in my opinion, let's look at going out there and is there a group out there? You people, you know, work with different towns, whatever, they may have some recommendations and, and look at that. Peter wasn't in the room to hear me say we want to look at that fund, but...
Yeah, we did leave the door open at the end of the principal group project. We said, "Look, if we need you guys to come back, would you be willing?" And they said, "Of course." And then we talked to Peter and said, "Can we find some money here and there if we need him to weigh in on this or spend a day here or a day there?" And the answer was, "Yeah, you know, on both fronts. They'd be willing and we'd be willing." It sounds like we might want to go back and maybe extend, expand upon that and say, "What does it look like if we did a three-month or six-month or something project just to kind of get us over this next phase?" Yeah, so maybe that's some homework for us to put some thought behind that, come back with a proposal.
Maybe we put a line item in there, say, "This is for contracting for this, so we just fund it with a certain amount."
If you guys don't have any objection, I would invite the public to see if they have any comments, since I know a lot of them are interested in this. They may, they may not. Either way, it's fine. But since there's a bunch of people here, if anybody wants to ask questions or comment, you're welcome to.
It's just a lot of work.
Yep.
Thank you. It's just a huge amount of work that's been done. It's amazing in a relatively short amount of time, I think. And a huge amount of work still to be done, so it's pretty exciting.
Yeah. Yep.
See, that is one of the people whose name is on some of these projects again.
Right, I was going to say, your name is on here, right. And I do, I do think that speed is important because I think people want to see results. They want to see things happen. That's why you'll see some of these projects were small, some of them were big because people want to see demonstrated, "Oh my gosh, you're really doing something."
Mary, I think you mentioned building blocks, and many of these projects have building blocks. And maybe we start with the first building block of any project. I'm not here to recommend one or the other or request money, but find one that has building blocks. Go with that building block. For example, maybe the pavilion has a building block in the form of a grandstand during, for summer performances. See if it works. That's, it also has an added benefit of creating momentum and community enthusiasm.
Becomes a vehicle to be talking about the rest of the plan with some food trucks around you. You got food and music and art and a chance and a captive audience that...
Absolutely.
That could happen in May, no problem.
Absolutely.
Right, can we design that, build it by May?
Can we do that? I think Adam said yes.
Close down the projects and maybe it's because I don't understand it well yet, but in the initial projects, I don't see, to me, the most important one, which is the re-articulation of Main Street through town. That change, I realize it's very difficult, and I understand the confidence in procedure, taking small steps before big ones, I get that. But on the other hand, we talk about communication and everything, most of these are not particularly visible, and that's a big one. And I wonder about perhaps putting the big one up there and taking a mall to the big one and going after that.
So that, that's up there on one of the goals because it's, that's many projects. Yeah. And it's, it's a great question. One of the things that Ed, I think, would probably chime in with if he were here because he's bent my ear a lot on this, and Mary's too, I know. What's the big plan? What's the big vision? Like, these are all great building blocks and they're all components and some of them are bigger goals, but where's the vision? Are we marching towards the right vision? And that's a piece of that. And we spent a lot of time when they presented their boards and their pictures and their sketches and 3D renderings, like that was a big piece of it. So it's all supportive of that direction, so we're not giving up on that. And I think, for me anyway, where I would go, "Next, after all this, and we do this
And I think, for me anyway, I would go, next, after all this, and we do this tonight, and we get our budget request in, and we get the charters written, and we get the people, you know, the wheels turning, I want to go back. And there were some early action plans about narrowing Main Street, putting stop signs at Bow and Main, doing a little plaza. Like, there are a bunch of good ideas that just didn't make the first cut, because our hands are already full. But I'd like to go back and revisit some of that stuff.
I wonder if maybe the time isn't a little closer now, given that the bridges have been changed?
Yeah, the bridges have been changed on both sides of town, right? I mean, they're, they're working on Mallett, and actually, both of them, the Mount Desert as well. And it seems like those are the feeders and sort of a theme of, you don't drive through, you come in from the south, you come in from the north, and don't drive through, you know? And that would...
Right. Absolutely. I think one of the reasons that Mallett Drive did come up on here is because we're already doing work on it, and we thought if we can make that look really beautiful and spur people's ideas, that in fact, we could do that in Main Street, too. So, yeah, because we want, we want both of them. We want Mallett Drive to look beautiful, and we want Main Street to look beautiful. And that whole, you know, I'm just speaking from trying to close Main Street for like the three days that we did, when was it, two or three years? Oh, wow! Talk about, that was like an epic fail, you know? Learned a lot from it, but...
Have we looked at talking to the US highway system and see if we could change Route 1 to start at 17 and then come back in on, you know, 24 instead of...
That would take care of a lot of our challenges, wouldn't it?
It would. We do it on other places, right? Roots and...
To get to Chip's point, Route 1 South was I-95 northbound for many, many years. Some of the people here remember that.
Did not know that.
That was, that was 95 north. And one direction, that got changed, boy, I can't remember the dates now, but boy, that was an interesting change of order we did that. But that's not other question to have different discussions on, you know, where that would go.
Right, because obviously, as you know, the, having that be Route 1 creates interesting challenges. Yeah.
Yeah. I think we've got to think big, so, yeah.
Yep. Yep. But that is an interesting point about, do you put in something that's such a big one that it just scares the shorts off of you? Yeah. 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 I'm sorry, that was really bad. It scares you to death. It scares you to death. Yeah.
Do you guys feel like you're at a point where you're ready to kind of move on, move forward?
So are we voting, or are we doing?
I think so, yeah.
Okay, you have to go back up there, though. Okay, you go back up there. Okay, I'll be quiet. I'm sitting down.
Any further discussion?
Excellent.
I don't think we've even read the be it ordered yet.
Yeah, I know. I think, who are we up to, Jake?
Unless you would like to.
Happy to not talk for a little bit, so happy to let you do it.
Be it ordered that the recommendations for prioritization of goals and projects recommended by the Downtown Vision Implementation Task Force be approved.
Second.
Thank you both. Any other discussion? As is? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Everybody? Thank you, everybody. Oh, items where we get applause. We need more of those.
The next one. Town Council schedules.
I could tag this on that.
Because I'm going to add more meetings?
Oh, jeez. I've got to hang on to this piece of paper. I lose it in January, and then I can't find it in February. Hit it to the wall. Fortunately, they do the calendar, the lines, so you can... Yeah, I don't always have access to that when I'm thinking about it. It's usually when I'm driving. There's no district meetings, though.
I was going to ask about that. If you guys want to do that, yeah. Thank you.
Three people in show up for them.
I've never actually done one, so I...
It was a direction to, no, bad council process in past years. Band-aid on a problem that didn't do anything and just made it worse.
All right. So we're up to, we're up to the last item on our, on our voting agenda. But then we've got executive session, so we'll be here a little while. But item 216-22 is about our schedule, which is pretty routine. We've got a schedule of meetings for next year. The only two things I wanted to ask you guys about, one is district workshops, which we've been kind of whispering about here at this end of the table. We haven't done district workshops in three years. I've never been a part of one in my three years in the council, because COVID got in the way, and then when COVID ended, we just never brought them back. I don't know how popular they were. I don't know if we still need them. I don't know if you want them. We can certainly always do a meeting that's not a council meeting in district. I know Ed does a lot of stuff down in District 2, because they've got the groups down there that support it. I don't know how I would start getting a group together in District 1 to do it. Anyway, so that's something to think about if we want to do that. And the other thing I'd like to suggest adding, which I talked about last month, is a goal-setting workshop for us to kind of dive in deep on what do we want to do as a council. I think that's not a Tuesday night meeting, but that's a separate meeting where we get a facilitator in, so it's not me yapping away, but somebody kind of helping elicit all the ideas and helping us prioritize them. As far as when to do that, evenings seem like they're pretty busy. We could try for an alternate Tuesday evening. I might suggest a Saturday, if you guys are open to that. Spend a couple hours on a Saturday morning with coffee and donuts and whatever, so that it's just kind of away from the hassle of work week. So if we could find a date for that, we don't need to find a date tonight, but if you're all willing to do that, you know, John and I can work on getting a facilitator, and then I'll just be in touch about picking a date. Saturday in January is what I'm thinking, when there's not much else going on. Okay? All right. So anybody want to make any other updates to the schedule before we go on?
I have two suggestions.
Both facilitators.
Oh, okay.
When we get to that.
John, do you want to read our motion for the schedule?
Sure. Be it ordered that the 2023 Town Council schedule be approved as presented.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
So everybody, thanks for that. That's all the votes we have for tonight. We've already covered the second item. The first item on committee assignments, I heard from two people that mostly more or less said, yeah, I'm okay staying where I am. If I had to, okay. Yep, so I'll just assume that everyone's in the same position. I think next meeting, we might have to do an order, because there's some statutory things that we have to vote on as a council, but other than that...
Facilities, appointments, and...
There's only those three, yeah, special projects. Ordinance for...
And ordinance, okay.
Everything else is typically the purview. Everything else doesn't really exist, so to the extent that you can actually appoint somebody as a liaison that falls under the chair, because there's no real authority for a liaison to really do anything. It's just a communications channel.
Okay. All right.
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you, Nate.
Thanks, Nate.
So we've got an executive session, two items. I don't anticipate that we'll be coming back and voting on anything in public afterwards.
Was there a discussion, maybe, to put something as an action item on a future agenda? Do you think that might happen?
Yes, I have a hunch that the executive sessions tonight may lead to agenda items in future meetings.
But no action?
No action tonight. Right, so it's sort of a heads-up, if people are watching, they don't need to feel like they need to stick around and wait for us to come out and wait, see if we vote on something.
I was asking only because should I tell them to stick around cable to film the end of it? If you wanted them to...
I don't anticipate it. Yeah. Yep.
So with that, so we are here to, item 217-22, to consider action relative to an executive session pursuant to Title I MRSA Section 405.6E pertaining to a legal matter, and Title I MRSA Section 405.6D pertaining to discussion of labor contracts between the Town of Freeport and the Freeport Police Benevolent Association. So I move that the council enter executive session.
Second.
Thank you, Counselor Egan, Counselor Pillsbury.
Aye.
Counselor Lawrence.
Aye, yes.
Counselor Daniele.
Yes.
Counselor Egan.
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Counselor Fornier has stepped out, but that's enough to get us into executive session.
501, yep. Five...
Oh, five zero...
Five zero to one abstained, not in the way.